I just wanted to take a break.
Hey, you want me to begin?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have seven o'clock.
Okay.
Free to begin the meeting.
Folks, we're gonna call the meeting to order tonight. Good evening, welcome. This is the February meeting of the Planning Commission. I will ask for the roll call and start with Kim.
Kimberly Watts.
I'm sorry, Erin Sullivan.
David Schwartz.
Martha Schrod.
Joe Plamper.
Mike Wright.
Sheldon Coen.
Alison Iverson.
And Andy Doctoroff. The first item on the agenda will be to approve the agenda for tonight. And if anyone has a motion to make, I would accept it. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved and we'll do the same thing for the minutes. I will entertain a motion or any comments about the minutes from last month's meeting on January 22nd.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The next item on the agenda. Hank, do you wanna say something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, basically what happened is that because we had such an extensive agenda between tonight, what we did was we split it. So having split it, I'm gonna need a motion from the Planning Commission tonight to set March 19th, 2018, as a special meeting to conduct the public hearings that we were originally going to do tonight. That way, we can have plenty of time to go over everything and we won't be shortchanging any appeal, presentation, or public hearing.
Okay, and so folks know, on tonight's agenda, this matter is known, is, uh... The text is "The matter of setting of the March 19th, 2018, as a special meeting for the public hearings for amendments to the zoning ordinance to clarify process, for special land use approvals and site plan approvals, site plan reviews in the proposed historic districts, amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding medical marijuana, for deletion of the definition of the term substantial improvement from the definition section of the zoning ordinance." So those are all items that we discussed or that were brought to our attention at the meeting last month. We agreed to have a hearing on these issues, to revisit it, to make sure people were comfortable with what's now in the revised ordinances. And what all Hank is doing is to give this issue fair time. We're gonna have a separate meeting to discuss these issues, so the discussion is robust and people have time. Is there any discussion about this motion, which I would entertain before, before, you know, the motion's actually presented? And wanna make a motion then?
To set the meeting for March 19th, to set forth in item five of the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimously passed, okay. The next item on the agenda is "The matter of the site plan review for the proposed expansion of the tiger habitat, including new viewing stations and an outdoor enclosure at the Detroit Zoo." Here's how I think I suggest that we do this. There are obviously a lot of people here tonight. I am sure that we're all gonna be respectful to the presentation that we're gonna hear. There's been a lot of information that has been disseminated in the community that is not, in my mind, substantiated. And so it's important for us to listen closely to what the proposal is, to keep our ears open, not to jump to conclusions. We will listen respectfully to the presentation. Hank will have his comments, which we would enjoy hearing. And then, given the size of the crowd tonight, we are going to have to have a public participation section. We're gonna have a public participation portion of the evening that is more structured than sometimes it is when we have fewer people. I think folks are gonna have to have a time limit. Folks are gonna be asked not to repeat themselves. Folks can be asked to speak only once and to direct their comments to the commission, as opposed to more of a dialogue or a free-form discussion that will not happen tonight. That's not to say that if people have questions, they will not be paid attention to. We will note their questions and then respond appropriately. But I do want this part of the discussion and this agenda item to be structured as appropriate, given the size of the crowd. And again, if any other member of the Planning Commission is anything to say about how to proceed tonight, I'd like to entertain those comments, but if not, I'm gonna ask the zoo to present its site plan. Everyone okay? Okay, so representatives from the zoo. Hank, do you wanna go first? Do you want the zoo to go first?
The zoo can actually go first. What I would suggest is that let them go and then basically I'll go. What I'll try to do is not duplicate any materials that they may present tonight. They did bring actual samples of materials that were probably, that were in question and were unclear on the original plan for clarification. So it's the pleasure of the chair, I would let them go first. And then if there's anything after that, I'll be going second. And then you're free to entertain public participation.
Okay. So gentlemen, thank you for joining us tonight. Obviously, you got a crowd. You can sense that people are concerned about the impact that the activities at the zoo will have on the quality of our neighborhood and, you know, how it looks and feels. And we ask you to respect the fact that there's a certain energy in the room and a certain concern that's expressed by people's attendance here when you make your comments.
Does he actually have something lights to turn out? Do you see the screen there in the back?
Maybe just a fur from the exterior.
Good evening, my name is Brian Mooney. I'm the owner's rep for construction management development at the Detroit Zoo. We also have Jerry Van Hackett, the COO of the zoo here as well, and excited and would like to show you guys what we're discussing doing in the tiger habitat. So the first picture there is rather small. If you guys have any trouble hearing me, just let me know. We did bring some poster boards as well and some materials, as was mentioned prior to. It'd show a little bit more detail. Behind that set of renderings is also a little bit more formal plan view. And if there's questions about that plan view, I'm sure that they can be answered. So what you see there is, is an outline of, on the left-hand side of the page, the existing surround in the backdrop there of the gray building that houses the tigers currently. And then it rolls around to the front and is about a little under half of the size of what the expansion is looking to be. So we're expanding out there to what would be the east, if north was proper north on the drawing. We're expanding out to the east, where you can see a larger moat across the front and then two special glass viewing stations, which allow, along the right-hand side of the page, it looked like black bumps on this small drawing, where you can actually enter into the exhibit for a immersive feel. So that's a, it's a glass wall. If any of you have seen the lions exhibit, it's something similar to that. The idea and the concept of the design here, as we expand and look for the best possible experience for not only the public, our neighbors, and our animals, is to look at trying to have an immersive experience. So the word forest in this, in this project is an important one. We understand the value of the canopy of trees and the idea that this is a natural setting and that you feel that you're immersed in the tiger's habitat transforms you to a different place. So we want to make sure that we look at a lot of the landscape improvements in this general area that will give that ability to not only shield, but also give shade and sense of ongoing green infrastructure and our mission of being sustainable and green as we move forward in these developments. Go ahead and switch to the next page, please. Skipping a little too fast. So there's a little bit closer view. Again, same picture that's up here. You can see a lot of the rolling landscape, the water, the dead limbs that will provide some height. We're adding a little bit of a grade elevation change for better viewing. And we are also treating the existing shotcrete material, which was part of the original shotcrete rock work that was done early on in the zoo. We're looking to make improvements to that from a color perspective, to add some definition and some texture, so it looks a lot less stark. So you'll see a lot less gray in this exhibit. You'll see a lot more earth tones and trying to blend that into a natural habitat a little bit more. This shows one of our interactive exhibits, where we're looking at putting a Jeep, a vehicle that would be used to view the tigers in the jungle and Asia, to show kind of what that would be like. And you see that tiger kind of interacting. That is obviously a glass wall and allows the visitors to get up close and also provide some shade and some depth to the exhibit that hasn't been there before. Okay, here we show a little bit more of an aerial view. So for those of you that are privy to more of a construction plan, it shows sort of looking down onto the print. You can notice where those light trees that you see there are existing. Those were all gonna stay. We'll see a plan in a bit here where we're gonna look at a little bit more of a landscape plan. You can see the dark shaded structures on the right-hand side, which are viewing locations. We have on the backside of the exhibit, a containment system for the yard itself. And then we go back to the existing building there, where we show the existing building having an addition off the back for what we would refer to as an off-exhibit holding. And that's an area for tigers to have some time outside where they're not necessarily on exhibit. Here we show the existing planting, or this is one of our planting plans. So this is showing, it's a little dark, a little light, sorry. But I'll try to walk you through it. Where you see all of those trees, that last slide kind of showed a handful, four or five, that were sort of scattered through the, through the center of the exhibit. This is really showing how many trees and understory that are gonna be added to the exhibit proper, as well as the visitor's side of the experience. You can also see on the right-hand side of the page, a nice big buffer of landscaping that comes around those buildings. Again, the idea here is to walk through a forest and to feel that you're in a natural habitat as much as possible. We're gonna see another slide here in a moment where we kind of treat the back of the exhibit. You can go ahead and switch to that. These are, these small little dots that you see, and feel free, on the, on the boards that we have here, we've brought them so you can kind of really study them. They're all, they have all the genus names and the discussion of what the trees and plantings would be. But all of those small little black dots, if you were to see them up close, are all a series of plantings all the way around. There's literally hundreds of different species of, or I'm sorry, hundreds of plantings that are going on in this exhibit. The largest swath being along the backside, which, which is a buffer for the containment of the, of the yard. That, that large swath that you see of all of those are evergreen shrubs and trees that are, are there to help not only the, the animal experience of being, you know, not necessarily used to the road exposure that they will now have, but also the road softening, so that we don't have too much of an impact looking back into the exhibit. In front of that dense foliage into the exhibit itself is a taller canopy of trees. So the idea there is to go up much higher and to provide a, more of a shade structure. And then as you go back onto Huntington Road there, you can see up in the right-hand corner and then alongside that, that existing fence line, we're filling in out there with a series of stepped landscaping. So we're going from a low understory, you know, bush or bore shrub, to a middle-sized evergreen, which, which roughly runs somewhere between eight and 12 feet tall, to a high canopy tree, which is really what we would call a 20 to 30-foot, 20 to 25-foot canopy tree. The process by which we're looking at those trees would be a size of about four inches if they come in nursery stock. So these aren't small trees. These are, these are fairly mature trees that are gonna come in and have an impact almost immediately. We've also had success with our own landscaping staff with an ability to transplant some of our medium-sized trees within our property to also give a sense of having a mature forest feel or an infill that doesn't seem that it's gonna take a long time to grow back. So we've looked at several trees on our property, which run somewhere between a six and eight-inch diameter. And those would be the larger trees that would come in and just try to give a little bit more sense of height throughout there. If you go to the east side of the, I'm sorry, the west side of the page there, you can see where that existing building is and then that new habitat that runs around the backside. That, that what I refer to as the exterior holding building. That is a partially castle block building, as well as tiger mesh, which is a specialty square containment material. And I brought some sections of that split-faced stone that are here today. That's the material that we're looking to use. And that is actually currently going up at Giraffes and is in place. At Giraffes, we went a little bit more sandstone. I think as we get into the color palette here with the architect and with the group, we're gonna be looking a little bit more, as I noted before, into the earth tones. So a little bit more mud pack browns or greens or maybe a little into the tans. So you're gonna get some definition and some stepping and trying to dress up the back of that building, so that it's not a stark wall. We wanna make sure that we have a presence on the backside to respect the fact that that is, is an important street and an important area that we feel should, should present itself well. Alongside that as well, and you can barely see, and I apologize for the fact that that's that way, but you can see a series of dots. And that series of dots is the same series of plantings that we have throughout. So we're going to come through that area and we're gonna line that entire area with the same sort of step landscaping that we talked about previously. A low undergrowth, a medium size, then a taller canopy. There is also a small bubble on this page that shows a change that is, is happening in the drawings, which is really removing some, some material that shows kind of like a car or a box there. That's been updated to also have plantings as well. So that whole back addition, we'll call it, or yard, will have this, this tree line exposure to it as well. Go ahead and shift. This is a rendering of kind of a, now we're back to the pretty pictures of trying to look at a, a print and then decipher in 3D model what that's gonna kind of look at. So this is the view that we're envisioning from, you know, a ways up. If you were kind of up on maybe the top of a roof on Huntington Boulevard, you'd kind of get a sense of that's what it looks like. We're looking, again, you can notice on, on, on the understory, where we're gonna have the smaller bushes, you can see where the evergreens of different size and caliper come in. And then we get into the hardwood canopy, so looking into the maple species and some of the others to, to really give that sense of forest back to that space. So we're looking at trying to make sure that we're, we're appropriately screened and that we provide a sanctuary for, for the longevity of the health of the animal, as well as something that I think is aesthetically pleasing. Whereas, you know, it doesn't seem as a service area or a back of house. Next slide. Again, these are some more of those same shots. So you can kind of just barely see in that first picture, a series of lines that represents the containment that we talked about before. The idea for that, not only the visitor, but also for the people in the, in the public side of the, of the street is we, and for the animal frankly, we want that to go away. We don't really wanna see that if we can help it. Again, I talked about earlier of being immersive. The idea here is to try to make you feel as if you're, you're escaping into their habitat. So we wanna try to make those hardscape elements go away or look as natural as possible. So the idea there again is to show that. You can see in the lower picture, yes, we do have some structures and some buildings that we have to deal with. The idea there again, the castle block, which has a nice look to it and a step to it, as well as, as texturing that material that we have that I referred to as shotcrete or gunite to kind of get rid of that old stark gray look and bring back some earthy tones. If you guys have been there anytime recently, we've, we've completed what we call the veldt building in the back, which is the wart hogs are back there, as well as others, the African wild dogs. That's one of the ones that we've done a lot of color on. So if you want an example of kind of what the new style of rock work that we've done looks like, then that's a good one to take a look at. But that's the last slide.
That's what we've got, yeah.
So appreciate the forum and I'm gonna hand it over to Hank.
No, we should do mine now and then let it, just get all the information out there. I would, let me, because I'm gonna answer some questions. Whatever your pleasure is. Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Basically, what I wanna do here, if it's all right with you, is that I'd like to go through a report that I typically do for site plans. And then I'd like to go over some clarification. Originally, we did have some plans that were in here that were not as detailed as we would like. So we had several questions, which we did ask the zoo and they were good enough to provide us with the information. I've had extensive conversations with Paul Wood from the zoo in the last, you know, 24 hours and also from Brian, who was a big help today in clarifying. I appreciate his bringing the materials in. Having said that, we still have a site plan review criteria that we have to take a look at. So first off, the scope of work. The zoo is proposing an expansion of the tiger exhibit, including modification of the holding building, an outdoor exhibit expansion, also up to 38,000 square feet, give or take. And the outdoor holding area is also covered by a mesh roof. It is a structure. Things that we wanna take a look at and that we will concern ourselves with with this is, first off, we wanna make sure that it's not too tall. It meets the height requirements. They're topping out at 16 feet, so that meets the requirements of what was allowed in the PRD district, which is what the zoo is in, is Parks and Recreation. The setbacks, the plan calls for 26.65 from the exhibit, the tiger containment area, to the property line is 26.65 and 21.65 from the holding area to the property line. Both of those are acceptable and well outside of the limited area for rear yard setback that we would employ with that. The proposed ground and roof structures and screening devices do not exceed the limits required as well. Their scope of work again is expanding the exhibit, the holding area. One of the things that we wanna be concerned with is the noise. The plan calls out for demolition of several interior areas, which is a temporary noise situation and not expected to impact the neighborhood. I will point out during my conversations with Brian today, that've been enlightening, that they plan to do their transplanting of the trees and some exterior plantings on the fence line prior to starting. So they'll be able to get a start on that, maybe transplanting some of their larger stock, which my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but can go from 20 to 25 feet from the trees that they're proposing. So these are not small trees and these are not small screens. Some of the trees will be between eight and 12 feet, which will also help mitigate the noise as well. When you put up your green screen, that also takes away some of the noise factor, which is important during the demolition and also during the construction. The mechanical plan calls for new roof-mounted fans capable of 7,000 CFM, also air handling unit, and all the mechanicals for that will be mounted on the roof. None of them will exceed the city's noise ordinance and requirements. There is a utility cabinet that will be located in the storage room. There is a generator, which is already on-site, which will be relocated, but should not impact the noise anticipation whatsoever. All noise again is subject to the city's noise ordinance and subject to testing, which we do with the zoo. Again, the building height is limited to 35 feet. This project goes well short of that with the building of the holding area at 16 feet with a wire mesh roof and a small additional vestibule at the holding building, which is being revisited as well at the same height. The lighting and power plan shows outdoor heat pads for the animal, auxiliary power outlets, but there appears to be no lighting that would adversely affect Huntington Road's residents, as that was a concern for us. We didn't want any sodium vapor lights or anything directly impacting the people who live there's living rooms or area. We don't anticipate any odors that would come out that would be any different than what they have currently. Duck work shown is to remove and replace with some relocation. Any venting that produces an odor may impact residents, should be filtered. That's standard procedure. But there does not appear to be any mechanical venting that would impact the residential portion of the Huntington Road residence. The biggest thing that we looked at was landscaping. The exhibit is screened from Huntington with an extensive combination of fences, walls, and plantings. Around the exhibit, there's one eight-foot-high fence, plus the existing boundary fence. And there's an exhibit tiger containment wall or containment barrier, I guess we could call it, which is an integral part of the exhibit and affords protection from the outside, from the zoo, from the tigers in particular. The bottom of the tiger enclosure in the back is CMU with, with an outrigger structure on the, on the tiger containment device. The CMU, as we now have gotten detail on it, we did not have the detail last week. We asked for more detail, the zoo is forthcoming. The CMU will not exceed two feet above the grade and in fact, can be buried, which Brian has said that he would probably do. That particular area where that intersects the ground is scheduled with, and I'll go into it a little bit more when we show the plans that I have with Holly. So there won't be any direct seeing the fence die into the ground. It'll be shielded by substantial amount of plantings, which I'll show you in a moment. The rear C, the rear CMU, I'm sorry, the screening trees to be planted, there's a total of 28 large trees at a minimum that will be along the border of Huntington Road. And by those, we mean a copy of the trees that they provided that was in your plan packet. Again, I'll speak to those when I put the PowerPoint up. But those trees are set in different heights. And also, there's a mix of cedars, evergreen types of trees and deciduous trees. As a result, you're gonna experience tree canopies in the summertime, which will also help to deaden the noise and provide more screen at a point in time when the zoo is more utilized by patrons. So those are kind of important as well. That was on page L5 of your plan. While the trees represent a commitment on the part of the zoo, they've also come forward with the information today that we had asked them for, which was, what's it gonna look like? How big are these things? So when they were talking about four calipers, four-inch caliper inch trees, you're talking about substantial trees. A lot of the trees that the city plants, when we go through and like a tree happens to come down in a storm or something like that, are two, two-and-a-half caliper inch trees. So these are substantially larger, substantially bigger. And when he's talking 20 to 25-foot mature trees, a lot of times on the renderings, you don't see what you get. But we anticipate that that's what we're going to see on Huntington Road.
Well, let's just make that clear before we go on. Is the zoo, zoo here prepared to represent, for the record, and we will, you know, make sure, we hold you to this through the permitting process, that there are going to be trees that are of the size and height that Hank just described?
That's correct.
So there will be trees that reach the height, when they're initially planted, they're between 20 and 30 feet tall, is that correct?
That's correct.
These are not Kmart specials that you're talking about? Okay, and, and...
Not only are there nursery stock that are large, and some of our evergreen nursery stock is limited, but the idea of transplanting, these are trees that we would have on-site, which are mature trees. Really, the best way to ensure that those trees will live is to transplant those immediately and put those into, into play when they're in their dormant season. So those are gonna be some of your larger and more impactful trees.
And just, again, so the record's clear, 'cause these are very important representations that you're making. What about volume of trees, number of trees? Can you describe how many trees there are going to be of certain types and heights and where they're gonna be located, so we have some way of visualizing that, as opposed to just, you know, guessing?
The best way I can present that to you is the slide that didn't show very well. But I do have the board here. It is blown up just like this, it's behind it. And I can pull it out if that's the...
It is blown up just like this, it's behind it, and I can pull it out if that's the the discussion point. We have the uh renderings that you guys looked at as well, these are the renderings. But this plan here is a specific plan that shows each one of the dots and then the dots correspond with a key here that shows the type of tree and the type of form. So we come all the way back into Huntington here and we look at those trees on that border and we can see each spot location that we look to make those improvements um all along there. So that kinda gives you exactly the key of what we're looking at.
And just again, so we're all clear, uh there is gonna be a new structure in the uh enlarged tiger exhibit. How visible is that? And I'm referring to the structure uh made out of the uh material that is here tonight.
The castle block, the exterior structure, yes. That gets up to about the same height on the backside. It does have a series of of uh tiger mesh components to it as well. But on all three sides, um that is detailed on this print as well, there's a double layer of trees, uh that triple stacked idea of a low undergrowth, a middle, and a tall canopy tree that would protect that building as a as a forefront to what you see here as a staggered block.
On next door Huntington Woods today, it was cer- there was a circulated rendering and I and I will, people are free to look at it, uh but I will describe it in narrative form. Uh there is an eight-foot, eight-inch cinder block wall. Uh on top of that is another eight feet plus of fencing that looks like a prison fence. And then there is on this rendering, uh three trees that are approximately uh four to six feet in height, uh which are in front of the cinder block wall. My question to you is, do you believe that this rendering is an inaccurate or accurate depiction of what your plans are?
It's inaccurate.
It's inaccurate?
That's correct.
Why is it inaccurate?
Uh multiple reasons. Uh first is is that the cinder block is a stark material. Uh we are not proposing a cinder block, we're proposing what we brought here tonight. It's a stacked block, um that comes in all split face block that comes in multitude of colors. It's a very interesting uh looking block and it's not a stark block. That's that's one. Two, the um fencing material that's shown on there shows a barbed wire and a black cyclone fence. Uh the system is shown in a, I think Hank has got the elevation that he may he may pull up.
Yeah.
Uh it shows a little bit more of what that looks like. It's a square tiger mesh material, so it's a lot um it's a lot more aesthetically pleasing than a cyclone fence. Um so there is a section of that that is true that that is there, um but it does not have the um the look of the barbed wire across the top with that stark relationship to it. Uh the plant stock that was put on that drawing is also very low and shrubby. We're looking at a combination of something that is low, something that's mid-level, that's more of an evergreen, and a tall tree. So by the time you look at it in a seasonal um perspective, you're gonna have something that is in front, uh much like you would in your house with with yews and dogwoods and so on and so forth, that would give you some three season color against what would be a decorative block situation.
And one more thing before we continue, Hank, I wanna make sure that everyone's clear and that we're clear, that this city still has to issue a permit, even if we approve the plans tonight and we can make a motion, can we not, that conditions issuance of the permit on their honoring the representations that are being made here tonight? Is that correct?
The documents that come in for final permitting should reflect all of the things that we talk about tonight and upgrades that have been discussed that were maybe minor in detail, but that we've had conversations with the zoo. At that point in time, then we would approve the plan, would clear planning and zoning and go for the building department for permitting. So the plan tonight, like for example, if there's twenty-eight trees and uh Brian has represented that there's going to be twenty-eight trees ranging between eight and twelve for some of the lower trees, all the way up to twenty-five feet or so for the taller trees, those are gonna be on the plan and they'll be noted. So once we have that, we in effect have a contract with the zoo to perform the site plan as to what's on the plan, which is at that point in time, when it will clear planning and zoning, once I see that, and then it will go to the building department.
Okay. I'm sorry for interrupting, I just wanted that to be clear for everyone, go on with your presentation.
Okay. Do you mind, Allison? Thank you. Okay, so the big questions are, what's up at the zoo? So let's take a look and see what we have, um as soon as this goes, which it may not. That's not good. So while this is rebooting. I hope we can show this. Should be, 'cause this is still going, so. Okay, so now, let's try this again and I apologize for this. Okay. So what we really have here is some of the things, and I can describe a little bit uh about what we're doing here and what we're looking at. We'll first talk about the tiger holding area, uh which Brian described to you here. This is the holding area, it comes over here to here. This particular wall is twenty-one point six-five feet from the property line, along with a service road that's going to be continued in through here. The area around this is made out of a CMU, which is a concrete masonry unit, which until today, we were not sure of exactly what the material was, so the zoo did bring in materials for clarification, because CMU simply is a concrete masonry unit, which can be anything from a cinder block to what you see before you here. So um with that in mind, um they've brought this in. This brick will also be laid, or this uh material will also be laid in a pulled pattern, similar to a clinker brick for some of you, where some of the bricks are pulled in, pushed out, and as a result gives the wall some shading and some relief, so you're not looking at a stark wall. The area in through here will be screened by trees and shrubs planted in through here. And on this side, you'll see a concrete masonry unit wall, which is what you see right there. And then over here, this complete side will be tiger mesh. When you see mesh on the exhibits or what looks like a cyclone fence here, it's not a cyclone fence, it's tiger mesh, which is specifically designed and developed to hold the tiger, um which we're grateful for. So you have this here and this is the area that's gonna be new. There was a generator that was here that is going to be relocated over to here. And all the mechanicals that were originally over here are now going to be on top of the roof and appropriately screened. This area over here now is the tiger containment barrier. The tiger containment barrier, which we were unsure of because we didn't have all the detail, um we had asked the zoo for more detail, which they provided, is a sixteen-foot-high tiger mesh on top of a foundation type or on top of uh material, which is uh masonry or concrete, um and I'll show you what that is in a second here. Uh this is the top view of this, so you kinda get an idea of what's going on here. All this equipment is no longer here, but it's going to be relegated to the top of the building. Correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Brian. Uh and this right here, which is the top of it, which looks strange, is actually a complete tiger mesh roof, so that the tiger can't get out. So we appreciate their attention to that. But that's what we're looking at for a tiger exhibit. There's going to be trees here, there's going to be trees uh pretty much, well, that's the bottom part of that, so you can see there's new plantings going there as well. This is exactly what the walls look, okay? So uh there's certain types of things here that you see. On the wall that faces east, you have the masonry units that's going to be here, along with the tiger mesh up top, which will allow natural light to go in on that side. The other walls that you see, which will face Huntington, but will be screened by the trees and shrubs that we have on that side, are going to be solid. The other wall, which faces east, is going to be completely tiger mesh, so it'll be open, but there will be screening there too as far as foliage and trees, correct? Yes, so that's.
That's west.
That's the west, that's the west side. So what we do is we have a building in effect that will hold the tiger, but we're screening it and we don't anticipate it being visible or slivers of it here or there from Huntington Road. Um in the meantime, what they've done with the split faced, or a lot of you might think that that's kinda like a split face rock, which it is, and uh basically that's what you're gonna be looking at. So where we originally on the plan looked at something that could be construed as concrete masonry, which is just a cinder block, they in fact are going with a substantial upgrade to that particular type of material. This is the material of what a castle block wall looks like. So here you see that they're pulled out and it creates some texture and also with the split and the facing on it right here, it looks substantially better than a standard masonry wall. The standard masonry wall is flat, smooth, and doesn't provide architectural interest where this type of material is offers more of that as an opportunity. So here's a little bit different map, which I've blown up and it produces the shrubbery area that we're talking about. This area in through here, which is a tiger containment barrier, will be heavily shrubbed, not only on the outside here, which is between the service fence, which is here, and this fence, which is the barrier. There's also a lot of shrubbery and foliage planted back in through here, which is planned, and as a result, it makes that wall, or the hope would be that it makes the wall kinda melt into the foliage, so that you don't see it as much. Then you add a layer of trees on the outside and you see that they've added substantial amounts of trees in through here that will hope to between this and this and the shrubs that are back in here, along with the shrubs that they're filling in the blank spots over here, should substantially reduce any visibility from Huntington Road and also act as an effective sound barrier. The deciduous tree again will provide a nice tree canopy and also during the busy months also help absorb some of the sound, which is very important for us. The types of trees here would show, and the reason I put this up is not that I expected you folks to read all this, but what it is, is it basically shows the amount of different types of trees and shrubs that are going in here. Each one of those represents a particular species of tree or shrub and as a result, uh some research that what will last, what will be green, what will make this look good year round, and that was the thought process behind it. Um this right here is the tiger containment barrier and this was the subject of a lot of consternation, which I understand. So as a result, we wanna clarify it now that we have the materials to clarify it, so that we have a good understanding of what exactly this is. So the line that we've talked about and that you've all seen is actually the tiger containment barrier. This right here is the masonry portion of it. You can see on the animal side that it's above grade. Why? Because it slopes from the top, the high point, which is here, to a lower point, which is in the front of the exhibit, which allows for better viewing for the patrons of the zoo and also uh brings this up to the grade and allows for just a very limited amount of space here. It's been represented to us that either they can bring their grade up to match this with their plantings, which would be fine, but if they put the, uh correct me if I'm wrong again, if I'm wrong, Brian, but your uh hollies and the foliage that they're being proposed will cover this uh containment barrier up to approximately here.
A little, probably a little bit taller with some of our arborvitae as well.
Bless your bless your heart. So how much, when we're looking at this, we're talking about roughly uh plants and foliage and hollies that are probably what, three feet tall, is that what we're looking at?
For the lower understudy, but we wanna get up five, six, eight foot as we start to grow up.
That's 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 fantastic. So we're looking for that.
We can't have anything with too much substance, because obviously we wanna make sure that the animal is not able to.
Right, can't climb out of it on the inside.
That's why we would use more of a shrub or an evergreen material that would crush under any kind of specific.
Okay, so that that tells us what we're doing. So what's happening here is that we're getting a thinner profile that's coming up here and going with an outrigger, which goes back into the exhibit. And they're doing that specifically because it's my understanding that the tiger can't climb that, for which, again, I'm eternally grateful. But you have this right here, that is what the fence looks like. There's the been more detail that the zoo has provided us as far as the plantings go with the trees. Um the questions were asked of the zoo, what kind of caliper are we looking at for trees, what kinda height are we looking at, and what kinda density are we looking at? And uh again, we did get our clarification on that. So really what we have at this point is a lot more detail than we did have previously. I'm ecstatic that this many people came out to a planning commission meeting. Usually we sit here and it's kinda quiet, but we really do appreciate this. So if there's any questions at all, I'm sure that myself or Brian would be happy to answer on the part of the zoo. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Meeting is yours.
So I think maybe what we'll do, uh since there is so much information that we're all absorbing, is we'll sweep through the planning commission, which can ask any questions that it may have without stating necessarily conclusions at this time. Then I think what we would do is we'd have public participation, and again, I will uh establish some ground rules, so it's more structured than it sometimes is. And then we would, after that public participation, we'd come in, talk among ourselves and give our comments, as opposed to asking questions. Does that sound like a plan for you guys?
It does.
Okay. So I will start with Allison, and it's, right now, we're not in public participation yet, we're asking questions, so we gain as much information as we can to make the most informed decision we can.
My biggest question is uh something I think we've kinda covered, but I just wanna make sure the the CMU, because we did not have the height of that until today, um that is actually part of the tiger exhibit, because it was two-hundred-and-eighty linear feet, it did say, of tiger wall or tiger fence on top of a wall. I just wanna make sure we're completely on on the same page here. How high is it going to be standing above what, if we're looking at it from Huntington Road, how high is it going to be? And is there anything we're doing to make it less visible as far as backfilling?
Sure. The the idea of that is really, it is a structural wall, it's really a retaining wall. So the idea of the exhibit is to have a stadium effect. In other words, your grade is smaller in the front and higher up as you get to the back. In case the 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 tiger is in the back, you can see it more readily from viewer's side. So what that does is we have to put a wall back there to retain that earth from washing out and causing problems in the back of the exhibit. So on the backside, to answer your question, we have some ability to change our grade there and actually bury that. I would like to see, the detail shows that as exposed a bit. I'd really actually like to see that buried. We like that natural barrier. And because we also have that um that entire shrub section that comes through there, we're gonna need to have some height and they need to have some uh ability to plant throughout that area. So I would say at the very most, you're looking at a foot, uh so one block that would extend up from the earth, and at best, I'm gonna, you know, we're gonna go ahead and make sure that that's buried.
Okay. And then the distance between the actual exhibit fence and then the service fence is about five feet, is that correct?
Correct.
And how many how many plants can be planted in between those and is that gonna be a problem with the fencing and its ability to grow?
You mean in the service proper, service corridor?
The, so the where the uh CMU fence is, uh the the fence that goes on top of the CMU, there's the service fence that's right, is that a five-foot?
Yeah, it's about a five-foot walkway for our keepers. So in front of that fence.
Okay. So there are no plantings in between the service area?
No, there actually are.
Okay.
So in the front facing the visitor's side is a row of plantings.
Okay.
Down the keeper, what you would call the keeper corridor, the keeper's, what you refer to as a service area.
Okay.
That would have plantings as well. Then that secondary, what we call the secondary containment, on the outside of that is another series of plants. So it's three rows of plants for essentially two containment rows.
Great. Okay. I think that is all that I.
Thank you, Allison. Sheldon?
Yeah, um I I appreciate the detail and the responsiveness um that's reflected by Hank's comments and the uh response that's been made, the comments that were made last time. Um and I appreciate the detail in anticipating the questions that would come up tonight. And I thank you for that. Other than that, I have no questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh I'd echo Sheldon, thank you. It looks great. I think, uh you know, compared to what we saw last time, uh there's there's a lot more detail, it's obvious that a lot of thought and effort went into this, so thanks for that. Um I do have one question I don't know if you can answer. Do you know where the rendering that Andy referred to came from? How did that get out? And what is it?
I, the the rendering that you.
I think it was from a a citizen, a resident.
You know, I think it wasn't the zoo and it wasn't done in conjunction with the city.
Uh, I don't, that's all questions I have, thank you.
I just have a couple, couple of questions about the transplanting of trees. So you're actually spading some trees out from other areas of the zoo and bringing them forward. To be placed on which section, uh, along Huntington Road or within the tiger exhibit itself?
Along Huntington.
So along Huntington Road. So kind of you've got your containment fences, all your fences and then. Those are gonna spade, how many of those trees are you spading out and moving, just out of curiosity?
Um, well, we do have some challenges along um, Huntington from the standpoint of how much earth we have to work with.
Right, to get it in.
Yeah.
Because you take out, cause if you take out a tree that's, you know, about that, you're talking about an enormous.
Large root ball.
Root ball, like at a huge spade. So you, so is there enough space along Huntington Road to actually place these trees?
Yeah, so if you look at the plan and, and you can kinda see the, it, the landscape plan. Shows a, a series of existing trees and then some infill that, that happened out on the, the actual uh, road proper. And then as you come in from the fence line, there's another series of trees that kinda comes in in that foreground. I would think that as we get wider, as we go uh, east. Is where we have an opportunity to do some larger transplant portions. Um, but if, if we don't have enough room. So s- mo- I would say the majority of them, to answer your question, would be on our side of the fence. Where we can get some of those larger ones in, we will.
Yeah.
But again, we don't, we're not looking at wanting to do, if we are gonna do the transplant, we're looking at those as being sort of the backdrop. And having more of the four inch or the larger root balls that are already stocked out. Where they make more sense from a utility and from a, you know, not, not having any kind of maintenance issues associated.
And a care standpoint.
Yeah.
About how many trees do you plan to spade out of the zoo proper to move out to that edge, just out of curiosity?
Um, honestly, I think we've identified at this point at least fifteen, um. At least fifteen at this point. And we'd like to try to transplant as many as, as we can. Because we tend to have a lot of really nice stock of maple and other things that aren't in areas that are descript. So the ones that, you know, they're kind of back of house areas and things like that. So we've been working with our in-house landscaper. Not only for this project, but also for giraffes to kinda figure out where we can move some things around. Um, and he's been really instrumental in, in, in sort of improving those gardens and looking at it from that standpoint. His, his background is really um, from a country club perspective, so. It's, it's a much higher level of landscaping and I think in general that, that we're, we're putting out.
So basically you're going through your, kind of like, th- these trees are gonna come from, from areas that are not. Parts of your normal exhibits are gonna be.
That's correct.
They're, they're growing in the background and they're growing here. Is that, are there going to be any taken out? That are going to then affect. Other sections of Huntington Road. So I, so you're not pulling anything that's going to. Make, make the section by the tiger exhibit look better, but then leave other sections along Huntington Road bare?
No.
Okay. That was my, that was my main question. I do appreciate the detail. I do appreciate the block wall. And the, the levels of the different plantings and the different heights of them. Um, I, I think it looks like a very beautiful plan.
Thank you.
Martha?
Um, I don't have any questions. I appreciate the detail that you went through and um. I think that you've shown a lot of sensitivity to um, working with the neighborhood and making sure that. Um, that the tigers are protected and the residents are protected. Um, so I thank you for that.
Thanks.
Um, I, I, I'll echo what everyone else is saying that I appreciate the effort to help us understand what it is you guys are doing here and. I do have one question and without pulling out the entire blueprint. In the electrical, um, page, I believe there was something about future lighting noted. And one of the considerations is what lighting you guys would put in that would have an effect on Huntington Road residents.
Um, traditionally what we're, what we're um, driven to do is look at replacement for LED, that's part of our, our green mission. However, um, the lighting on the backside of, of the exhibit. Um, we, we, we appreciate having a dark zoo unless we need it for um, s- something very service oriented down low. Um, not a high bay, not a, a mall road opening. We, we really like to try to turn off as many lights as we can for the animals' well-being, so. I wouldn't anticipate, a lot of times those notes are uh, vague from the standpoint of. Um, working with the consultants to identify whether we want something. But from our standard, um, we, we wanna try to keep it as minimal as possible for multiple reasons, so. Maybe over a door where you would enter and that would be it.
Thank you. Eric?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely wanna echo everybody's else's positive comments about the plantings. Um, did I, did you say you had brought a sample of the tiger mesh?
I did not.
Okay. Is there any way to, well, if you don't have it, I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand what a sixteen foot wall of tiger mesh would look like from the road.
Tiger mesh is essentially a um, a two by two square. Of, of a, a little bit larger gauge than a cyclone and it can, it can come in a variety of colors. But what tends to happen with it as opposed to cyclone, cyclone kinda has a wavy pattern that's picked up more, um, more noticeably. The square pattern of the fence is a little bit more pleasing. It looks different, it looks a little bit more. Um, expensive and interesting. Um, and it's, it, it's obviously part of our, um. Our need to follow not only the AZA but the USDA for containment. So we have a very strict set of guidelines that are important that, that dictate. Uh, not only animal safety, but uh, human and public safety. So we want to always look at things that can provide um, natural light and can provide the ability to. Also have that sense of openness but security. And so that's really what the tiger mesh was developed for. Uh, but i- you can imagine s- a small squares, two inch by two inch.
So it's two inch by two inch and it's what gauge metal?
Uh, I think it's sixteen is what that is. Twelve, ma- maybe twelve to sixteen.
Twelve sixteen foot, okay.
And it's a welded, sometimes galvanized, sometimes black. Um, I don't know that I have it detailed specifically what the color is. Um, but uh, we do like to, to use black so that it just tends to disappear in the, in the background. You see kinda through it.
And the other comment I make, that I would make that I, I struggle with and I, I recognize the challenge with an exhibit so large, but. Especially in the holding area with the additions in existing structures. Um, as I comically try and look back at the plans, I had the same problem I had when I rolled them out on my living room floor, which is. I- it's all, i- it's all cutaways, right? There isn't an overview of the entire. Uh, structure of the holding area with the existing building with the new addition off to the side that makes it easy to appreciate. And when you provide it in this drawing, you provided it with. A lot of trees, which I appreciate the trees. But again, it, it obscures it from being able to really appreciate what is, what is being built there. And so I, I've seen a lot which makes me feel better today. But it's really hard to assess without um, some more full drawings besides just cutaways that you build from.
And I think maybe um, some of the details that uh, were presented to Hank today and I think we put up. I, I, and I understand it's kinda difficult to see up there, but we did provide as many details as we could today. Uh, based on some of the concerns about what the top of that roof looks like, the elevation. So I think if um. Maybe Hank wants to, you know, share those a little bit, um, you can kinda take a look a little closer. That's, those are the elevations, so that's really the, the. Aside from a rendering, that's really showing you exactly what that wall's looking like if you were standing and facing it. And it's each, it's each one of those four walls. Um, and understand that that's chopped up, but that's how you have to kinda look at it in plan view to see what that wall's doing. Uh, and then I think you had the other plan that showed the, the roof structure. Which maybe was a little confusing, that's actually looking down.
Right.
Um, so that, that kinda shows those walls all put together now with the tiger mesh on the roof. And um, you know, provide, it kinda provides the sense of what that building's gonna be on the backside of the existing. So when you look at that full site plan, this kinda blows it up a bit. And uh, I, I appreciate the fact that um, you know, with, with the need for the questions and some more clarity that we were able to provide those. Um, but if, if you need more information to digest it, they're certainly there.
Can we flip back to, thank you. And so the topmost view, I can't orient myself to that. Is that from inside the exhibit? Or is that?
That's the existing building. So you're looking at what would be the uh. South wall of the holding area. So that right now is what. If you had no building, no enclosure there and you were looking at what the back of the building looks like, those top squares are the skylights. The middle squares are the, the block windows that are on the back of the building. And uh, on, on the north side of that building. Um, and then we're basically building off of that existing and coming out to the north with the four walls that you see below.
Right, so when you look at that from Huntington Road in the future, you'd be seeing the sixteen foot. Um. Block wall?
Depending on the view.
Depending on the view, right.
Yeah, you'd either see the um, sixteen foot block wall, or you'd see this cutaway view with a partial.
The eight foot?
And the eight foot, or you'd see that if you were coming from the other side, that.
But you'd still see the skylights over the top of it because they're the highest point still?
Um.
Or is the wall the highest point?
Yes.
The skylights?
Depending on how close you are, but yeah, you'd s- still see the top of that building. Of the existing.
Yes, this view does help a lot, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kim, are you, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Kim?
No, I, I thank you for the level of detail, I think between what you had presented and anticipated and what um, you've worked with Hank to answer today. Fine with it.
Thank you, uh, just a few questions. Uh, I just drove uh, down Huntington uh, tonight. And obviously, there are uh. Many structures in which animals are housed along Huntington right now. Uh, and if you could draw a word picture to describe the differences between what's there now that is currently within. Eye shot of Huntington Road residents and, and the rest of the community and what will be there. Uh, in the future based on the designs that we're uh, looking at. Just describe the difference from a narrative or aesthetic point of view.
Well, that we, you know, we've got some newer buildings up towards the front. Um, you know, obviously the Polk and, and some of those, there are, there is some, uh, some tree lined areas a- along that stretch. The majority of the buildings, um, were sort of original, um, stark, uh, concrete gunite structures. And the back of those has always been sort of, the idea of the design of those was to give. Everybody on the viewer's side a little bit more of the, of the rock work and the theming and that type of work. And so. Um, the idea with this one, again, I, I, I'm gonna go back to the word immersive. The idea is to have it look as if it's a forest and that it fits. And we don't wanna see a service area, we don't wanna see. Um, you know, a- all of that stuff going on. We really wanna make sure that this is buffered for not only the animal and the guests, but also the, the public. So I would say it's a little bit more of a modern approach to, um, to the construction elements we're gonna use. I discussed earlier at. At changing the color of that building so that it's not that stark gray to come back in with something that looks more like a natural mountainside or a. A rock structure as opposed to sort of that stark gray. So if you move up towards, let's call it hippos. Um, hippos has kinda got that, I'm sorry, not hippos, uh, rhinos, it's got that, that kinda stark gray, uh, that comes along that backside. Um, and we, we, we wanna try to add a little bit of a, a, a more natural look to the backside of that building. And get something that's a little bit more interesting. The concept is forest.
Thank you. Have you budgeted how much the, uh, the um, trees and the sh- that the uh. Greenery is gonna cost? Um. Along Huntington?
Along Huntington or along the, the exhibit, I mean. It's uh. We're still finalizing all of the construction.
Your estimate?
I would estimate that the, from the, from the fence section or the containment section. Through the Huntington section, you're, you're encroaching a hundred thousand dollars almost. I would say about eighty thousand dollars in, in landscaping.
Um, and I know that this is a hard question to answer because you're. Uh, I'm asking for one number. But we have a wall and it's sitting adjacent residents on Huntington. Uh, what percent of that wall or structure, the facade, is typically going to be visible? To uh, the community, given the foliage. And I know this is an estimate, but. If you can make it a, a good one, that would be appreciated, so we can understand how exposed it is.
The interesting part, if you look at the juxtaposition of the angle of the building, the design was the, there is an existing clumping of trees. That runs along that was left in place, uh, along the, what we would call the most stark wall or the tall wall.
Mm-hmm.
So the idea of that was there is a level of tree cover that's there, then added by a, a nice percentage of trees uptight against the building. So really the majority of the look is at an angle. Looking through it this way from the cross street that comes through and maybe coming um, from east to west. Is where you kinda see that wall, uh, or that, or that area where there would be a pathway where. You maybe see a little bit more of a, um, the back of the, the building. And then a series of trees along this, this wall section. I would estimate that on print to be about thirty percent, thirty to forty percent. Um, and of course, you're gonna have some peekaboo's that come in in between the, the, the seasons, but. Uh, generally speaking, I think that's, that's fair.
Will that change over time? Meaning, uh, as the years pass, as the trees grow, will that percentage decrease or increase? Or stay about the same?
I think the idea here is to try to um, activate this space. On a more mature landscaping level than uh, maybe a typical site would. So a new build typically has small stock that then grows and matures in a five or ten year ratio. I would say these are gonna continue to grow, continue to bush out, continue to um, um, expand and, and, and take less away, yeah.
Um.
Take more away, sorry.
Okay, and um. I guess the final question, which is totally unrelated to the aesthetics, is one of safety. Uh, and I know you referred to this and Hank was alluding to it as well, uh, but. Can you give the public some level of confidence? Or a hundred percent level of confidence that this does not present a safety threat? There will be tigers in the neighborhood. So I, I mean, how, how do you? Well, yeah, I know, but a little powder away. Uh, how, how can you satisfy us that this does not present a safety threat?
Um, animal welfare, public welfare is a constant, uh, a constant concern. We're constantly looking at improvements for that. So even though we have old buildings. Uh, we look at new technology and we look at uh, different strength components to ensure that we've got. Uh, a system that is, is monitored twenty-four hours a day. So we have a code red system, for example, as well as a. A double containment system that is, um, is inspected by structural, designed by structural engineers, inspected by structural engineers. And follows the code of not only, um, the building standard and the structural standard, but as I mentioned before. The AZA standard, which is also done on an inspection period, um, bi-yearly. So we, they come through and they look at each one of these little things. To make sure that we don't have a level of deterioration or concern in any of our environments. And that's for every single animal that's in the, in the zoo, whether it's a frog or a tiger.
Thank you. Okay.
Mister Chairman, just for a point of clarification, because it is part of the, uh, the way that we do a survey review. For this type of situation, there's a requirement of eighty percent opacity, meaning that you can't see through eighty percent of what's going on back there.
Oh, thank you.
He's alluded to thirty to forty percent, but I mean, again, we're not talking about. Seeing where the trees are transplanted, what the shrubs actually look like once they get them in the ground. So that figure will be worked with to try to achieve exactly that figure. So uh, Brian has been, uh, over the, over the weekend with between Paul and Brian, uh, they've been. Phenomenal at getting detail, cause we only had the weekend to get the detail to everybody and get it out. So um, I appreciate that, uh, and for just a point of clarification. Should it be that there's not a, uh, that there's some open spaces or there's some void in that? Would the zoo be willing to work with us to fill those voids so that we make sure that we do what we can to make sure that we meet our opacity requirements?
Of course.
Okay.
And Hank, just, uh, maybe since we have our attorney here. maybe since we have our attorney here tonight as well. There have been a lot of representations. If there is a motion made tonight that conditions approval on compliance with those conditions before there's permitting. And then the permit is granted and they do not honor the commitments. What can we do to make sure that our, our motion and the conditions upon which it's based are complied with?
Well, the conditions would be the conditions that are the basis for the approval of the site plan. So they're part of the site plan approval. They have to comply with that. If they don't, they're in violation of their site plan.
And then what happens?
We can either issue tickets or we can take them to court, just directly to circuit court for violating the site plan.
Okay. Okay. So that's it for our questions unless Allison got another question?
I have one more. I'm looking at this, the actual service area that isn't actually going to be screened by anything. Is there going to be dumpsters? What kind of traffic will we see in that area?
No, and, and there is actually a little bit of existence between there. It's just not as impactful as the, the new stuff that we're gonna put in. But that's just the back door. We usually only make our rounds for, for feedings and for pickups. And so we don't leave any materials back there having anything. We'd have a truck once or twice a day that would make that round unless there was an emergency. But nothing, no dumpsters, no service vehicles parked for an extended period of time or anything along those lines.
Any other questions, guys?
What's estimated completion?
We're looking at, obviously, getting our permit in place and making sure that all of that is comfortable. We'd like to try to have this completed here this summer and into the fall.
Okay. Anything else, guys? So we're gonna start public participation, and I think what we're gonna do is, again, each person speaks once. And you'll have two minutes. I will give you about a twenty second warning. As I ask you to wrap it up, if you're at one minute forty seconds approximately, if that's okay with everyone. And again, let's try not to be repetitive because we've got so many people, but everyone should have their fair opportunity to state their state their opinion or make any comment.
And please state your name and address.
Yes, and of course, everyone state their name and everyone state his or her name and address for the record. So who would like to begin? Why don't you stand, why don't you stand up?
Pam Striegel, eight nine six Huntington Road.
If you could approach the microphone so that it-
Well, my question was, it was very hard.
Can you approach the microphone, please? Thank you.
It was very difficult, I'm a designer, to, to see the plans. Can you pass those around? So that we can then at least see them?
The boards?
Yes.
Sure. Okay.
That was just, yeah, so that everyone knows what we were looking at.
Okay, thank you. Time out. If there is a question like that, I wanna make sure, I mean, we can feel free to answer those types of questions.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And that, that's fine. I, I mean, you know, if you can, if those are, yeah, why, why don't you just start the bottom off and start circulating them for people to look at?
Okay. You can just move up to the podium.
Jacob Rush, eight two eight six Huntington Road. I'm actually directly behind or facing the current exhibit. There's actually some hemlock trees that are currently twelve, fourteen feet high right there. They do a nice job of shielding it off. My question really is, in the wintertime, which is six months of the year, we would say here, there is this flowered trees are not gonna do much to offset it. So my question is, and, and this is really for all of Huntington Road, and I moved here and I see all along there, you can see exhibits. Why aren't more hemlocks planted along the way? Because that makes a natural barrier that you can't see. And if you planted it on essentially the Huntington roadside of the fence line, none of us would see, and this would really wouldn't be an issue at all.
You know, excuse me, I'm gonna ask that people not comment or applaud. We're trying to keep this structured. And you can speak through your comments, but I wanna keep this under control if at all possible.
That was all I had.
Thank you.
I just-
And why don't, and why don't you answer that, please?
I just figured hemlocks are extremely poisonous to animals, so we've got a list of trees and shrubs and flowering plants that we just don't use. And hemlocks would be one of those for obvious reasons.
Are there alternates to, to a hemlock that doesn't-
There are. And that's what we've tried to use, arboribides and the cedars that stay green year round and, and block quite a bit of the view.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Ilana Benzab, two five two oh six West Roy Court. My question is about the references to the HVAC, I think it is, that's on top of the building. I'd like to get a sense of how high that's gonna be, how intrusive people live near it. They're also having, we're looking, it's talking a lot about street view, but they're also higher up views. I'd like to hear some-
Sirs?
The building has a natural parapet which sinks down, so you can barely see sort of the, the skylights are above. These units would be placed in a situation where they would sit down a bit. And then also, I believe you guys have a screening ordinance associated with rooftops of the rooftop units. So we would look at, at something to screen those as, as well as the generator. I know there was a discussion of, of doing a shroud on the generator. And we certainly look at doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, comment? Any? Okay. Then, ma'am?
I just had a question, piggybacking on hers. Julie Sparks, eight three three six Huntington Road. The sound level to those HVAC things being on the, is that on the existing building?
That's correct.
And compared to a generator, which on the occasions when that has to go off, we hear that, would it be similar, louder, much quieter? Because it sounds like these are fans that are running all the time.
They're typically quieter. They're also reserved and set back a bit with the parapet. That does help. And also, we, we do have a noise meter and we do have testing that we do with, with the city to make sure that the decibels are within a approved rating. And we would certainly do that on this project.
Right. I realize there's a, there's a rating level, but I don't really know what it is. I was looking for like a comparison, like as loud as a, you know, my air conditioner or something to compare it to.
I would say the newer systems, they're, they're, they're much quieter. I, I don't know that I can compare it only because of how, what sound does and where it's gonna be located. But I, I will say that we'll work very closely with the city to try to keep, keep that below any kind of decibel.
Mr. Chairman, just to, just to piggyback on Brian's answer because she brings up a very good point. As it sits down, it's going to block a lot of noise as well. So not only will it block visual from the backside, but it also blocks noise. There'll be, if there's anything that comes up where it becomes a problem like that, our noise ordinance kicks in. And there would be potential sound baffling or something of that nature or shrouding of it that would. But that's kinda during the process. We'll find out what it is. But again, the noises, you're looking at a, at a wall where the outside exhibit of the holding area is twenty-six point six feet. Then you have the entire depth of the holding area. So you're looking at, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you're probably looking at the air conditioners being seventy or so feet away at a minimum from Huntington Road.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, Jeff Nowak, eighty-two seventy-six Huntington Road. I just wanna understand, there's obviously gonna be a landscaper positioning these trees, the large trees particularly. How are we gonna determine where those are positioned and how the sightlines are gonna be optimized for the, for the residents? And, and are you willing to work with the residents to optimize those positions?
Yeah, I, I think the, I think the important part is a plan has been outlined and given to the city here. So we've got a, a, a plan that we've presented. I think if there's some comments about tweaking any of those, that they should come from Planning Commission. We're open to, you know, opportunities to use different materials within reason. And, and, and point out that we want to try to do the best that we can. Some questions were brought up about sizes of, of the area that we have and the curb and those types of things. But I think we would wanna do that in an organized fashion with the city as your representation.
So have you gone into Huntington once, a kind of line of sight, looked from the residents towards the property, understand, was that plan a part of the?
Yes, that was part of the landscaping.
Okay, so you're, the landscaper went on the other side of the fence and positioned these trees to optimize screening for the residents?
Yes, that was the plan.
Okay. So if, maybe once things start to get planted, maybe they don't seem to be as well positioned. There's gonna be a process to, to adjust those or tweak those potentially?
I think once a tree is generally planted and approved, just like any building, if it's approved print, then that's what's gonna be there once plants in the ground.
So you're gonna hit that position exactly where it is on that print?
It's a contract. And what we are approving tonight is essentially a contract by which they must comply.
And no one's really looked at the residence view and determined whether they're really obstructing, whether we're getting good clearing?
All we can say is that the trees are now identified in terms of the location. And he did also represent that there was the perspective of the homeowners taken into account when they did the landscaping.
Andy, I think also, if I could add in, I think Hank said there was a requirement for like eighty percent screening. Is that, did I miss?
No, that's correct.
Okay. All right. So I, I mean, it's not gonna be impervious, but it's, it's gotta meet the code.
Yeah, okay. So if there's a huge gaping line of sight from my house to that building, we're gonna have a discussion then, right?
Well, I, I don't know that.
I don't know what that means.
I don't know what that is.
But-
Well, we're gonna obstruct the building by eighty percent as well. We're not just talking about the fence, we're talking about the building.
Hank?
There's two things that go into that. One is, to answer your question, the zoo has already indicated a willingness to revisit certain areas if the landscaping fell short.
Okay, so that's the final.
So let me finish, please.
Okay.
And then, once they've done that and they revisit that, I wanna point out, there's a gate there now. So if the area in consternation is the gate, the gate exists as it does right now. And what will happen is, is there will be more screening there from the building rather than less because of proposing trees along there. I can't comment really on hypotheticals, but on the surface, the appearances of that indicate that those trees would do a very good job of screening. I can't tell you whether or not they meet our zoning ordinance until they're actually in and we can take a look at it. But I can tell you that over and above what's on the plan, the zoo has indicated a willingness tonight to revisit certain areas should you look out your front window and you've got a direct alley into the middle of nothingness except a gray block building, which is not gonna exist because of what they've already said. That, yeah, there'd be a call for concern and I would tell you that at that point in time, you should feel free to call the city and we'll take a look at it. The zoo's indicated they're willing to discuss it, so we would absolutely call the zoo and take a look at it from your perspective.
Thank you. Are you the conduit for that?
I would be one of the conduits, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Andy, can I ask a clarifying question here?
Sure.
Hank, the opacity requirement is for the Huntington Road fence as it's covered by screening material only?
That is correct.
Right? So there's no opacity requirement for the building as the building is higher than the fence. They're just going above and beyond to apply screening for both the animals, frankly, right? And for the neighbors. But I don't wanna mislead anybody that we're out there trying to hide sixteen, twenty-four feet of building structure with eighty percent opacity, because it's not what we looked at, not what we're approving.
And not, not only that, the structure is off, everything is, there's nothing being proposed that's over sixteen feet high. So realistically, when you have trees coming in that may be as high as twenty-five feet, some that may be eight feet, some that may be twelve feet, what you're getting is pieces of a puzzle that fill in an opacity requirement for a wall. And until those things are actually planted and in place, we won't know exactly what that is. But there is an opportunity, as the zoo represented tonight, to revisit that in case there is perhaps an error. Or there was something that, man, we could use another tree, that they have indicated they would be willing to revisit that at that point in time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Rattlee Rishaw. I live at eight one four four Huntington Road. I have a question about, is it gonna be the same landscaping crew? I live on Huntington and going towards Aaron's house and going towards York, a bunch of little trees and little shrubs were planted on the berm, I guess that's your property. They're dying. They look very non-professionally planted, and it just doesn't look good. And so I'm wondering, is that the same crew that you're gonna have that's going to be constructing all the trees along that route? And also, if your budget is eighty thousand to a hundred thousand, I just did my house about four years ago. And I spent half of what you're trying to say your budget's gonna be for, for us to see. So I mean, it's really, considering how much this exhibit's gonna cost, that budget number seems, for us not to have to see the property seems very horrifically low, in my opinion. Because I just, like I said, I just did my house and I did my landscaping and I spent about half of what you're suggesting.
Two things. Question back for you. How long ago was the landscaping done in your opinion on the berm? Do you know?
I don't know. Maybe Aaron has a better, I mean, you, you see what, two years ago? At least three, two, three, I mean-
I was thinking it was thirteen or fourteen, to be honest. It was shortly after we moved to that location.
Two thousand and three.
Okay.
It wasn't, it hasn't been that long where it's been planted. I mean, maybe this, those are new.
Okay, so we have a new landscape manager on site. And we've worked very hard to improve all landscaping on the grounds in the last, it's really only been on site for about a year now. So that, that hopefully would be improved with a higher level of standard.
I mean, maybe if you could drive-
You know, we're not, no dialogue. The question's been asked. Why don't you give them an opportunity to respond?
The, the other part that I would respond to respectfully is that we have a large account, a large relationship with independent nurseries. We have our own spade equipment. We have our own landscaping crew, so it's kind of like operating directly. So I'm not giving a retail component of what landscaping would cost. I have no idea exactly what that landscaping that you did would entail. I would say that our stock would surprise you at what the value would be and how much we can get. We purchase on a national level. And therefore, we're, we're allowed to basically get preferred pricing and use, use those contractors to, 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 to do the best that we, we can within our organization to provide a, a quality product. So our landscape manager was the head of greenskeeping at a, at a TPC National Course now. We feel that our landscaping has greatly improved. He's gonna work independently on this project and, and throughout projects at the zoo. So I hope to see concerns about landscaping and other things get better for everybody on that side.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sir?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Ray Avidian. I live at eighty-three sixty-six Huntington Road. If I may, just wanna express one kinda question. Will we be able to see the tigers when they're up at the base of the barrier fence?
That would depend on where you're looking from and what, if you're trying to find that.
Would we be able to see them at all?
If you're looking for them, I would assume that you'd probably be able to see them, not clearly, but potentially.
It's, there's been some concern on parts of our neighbors, some of our neighbors, that if they, they can be seen at all and word gets out that they can be seen by going down Huntington Road and seeing tigers, which you can't, can't see now, that that might cause a traffic problem. People wanna see the tigers and they can see them from Huntington Road. I just wanted to bring that up. The other thing I wanna do is playing off Chairman Dr. Off's question about, if you could paint the word picture. The word picture that I would like to paint is it's a perfect world, and I want you to understand that there's a lot of folks that feel this way, me in particular. I would like to see nothing but green year round. I would like to smell nothing but fresh air year round. And I would like to have sound at a very reasonable level from generators, from other equipment, from concerts, so on, and all that sort of thing. But those things don't have anything to do with your exhibit. So what I'd like to do is suggest, and I think we can all say this, we'd like to reach for that goal to the best of our ability. Is that something that we can try and do? I'm asking the commission.
Thank you. Anything else? From anyone else? Anything else from anyone else?
Linda Solomon, eight-two-four-six Huntington. I have, one of my concerns is the landscaping because I think that, I just question how realistic the size of those trees are when they're planted in a space that's five feet wide. You know, I, I walked along Huntington and saw that, you know, some of the, the evergreens that are five feet wide are this tall. You know, the taller they get, the wider they get. So you have a road and you're not gonna want the trees encroaching in the road because that's your service drive. So you have the road between, I know one side is only five feet wide. I'm not quite sure what the other side is. Maybe you can tell me. How much?
Six and two-thirds.
Six and two, so there's a six, there's, there's a, a, a spot that's six and two-thirds wide, a road, and then a spot that's five feet wide. So how realistic is it to put a twenty-five foot tree in there? Is that realistic?
Is that the question?
Yeah.
Specifically, it depends on the tree. So when you're talking about a deciduous tree, as opposed to one that lays low, like an evergreen, then your caliper and the size that you're doing is gonna stay very small going up to that height. So it's height as opposed to width at the base. So I think there's plenty of room to add a significant amount of foliage and trees at different heights to help shield the problem.
Twenty seconds.
Okay, and then, so you're representing the holly to be six feet tall. That was on the plan that I saw. And I'm just, I don't think I've ever seen holly in Michigan that's six feet, six to eight feet tall. And is that a realistic expectation?
Holly is the lower growth. There's an evergreen growth that's above that. So that's the underbrush and then there's a taller bush in front of that or next to it.
Thank you. Hank, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a point of reference for people. Is that when we're talking about planting larger trees in smaller spaces, for most people and in Huntington Woods, there's different right of ways. But the area between the sidewalk and the curb has a substantial amount of varying sizes of trees as you go through Huntington Woods. So you can see anything from a huge tree that may be two hundred years old to the smaller ones which we've recently planted when we redo the roads. But there's a variety of trees that can go in different areas. And the same situation applies to us as it does to the zoo in this particular thing is that you have to put the appropriate sized tree in the appropriate sized space. So as a result, you can't put all tree A in one space. You may have to jostle them around a little bit. But the goal again with this is to comply with opacity requirements.
Okay, any other public comment? Sir?
Oh, well, I had a quick question actually. Rich Dose, eight-two-two-six Huntington Road. Before, I heard, you guys mentioned a water feature. I just wondered if you could tell more about the water feature and if, you know, if that'd be visible from the road and how bad it would be.
Sure. The existing water feature that's already there is the waterfall. That will continue to be in place. It'll trickle down a little bit more to a, a little bit more of a recirculating stream that's sort of in the existing footprint. And then there'll be a small water feature closer to the glass window viewing area. That's really more of a standing water or a babbling brook. It doesn't have much noise. So the existing, the existing waterfall that's there is exactly what you would have in terms of the noise question.
Thank you.
Jason Danny Lovich, eight-two-zero-six Huntington. Just a couple of quick questions for some clarification. The Keeper Road, how much traffic will be on it and what's the largest vehicle that will be going through? Will there be any additional openings on the Huntington side? The viewing sheds, we didn't talk a lot about those tonight. Will those be visible from Huntington Road or will those kinda be graded down? And you mentioned the transplanting of the trees would be one of the first things that would happen. When would the date for that be?
You got all that?
All specific.
I mean, seriously, why don't you ask them one at a time, so...
Yeah, go back, sorry. So the, the...
Keeper Road.
First question is Keeper Road. Okay, most of the keeper vehicles are golf carts and/or emergency transit van, which is a small white van. That's the extent of what you would see on that road. And it was, it's, it's gonna be minor. It's really just to, to service that back area for, for two exhibits. Next one?
The, no additional openings?
No additional openings.
Okay. The viewing sheds, will those be, those be visible or are those gonna be pitched down?
They are sunk down and graded. Remember, the grade is gonna go up, so these are gonna sit a little bit lower. They are off to the side of the exhibit. There is also a substantial amount of plantings in and around them. And where they're positioned right now, if you looked back there, there is a huge clump of large stock trees that we did leave on the very far east-hand side of the exhibit. That's where the viewing shelters come in. So the idea is to have that natural big growth, kinda try to hide those. So I, I can't say that, you know, again, to answer the question, like the tiger, if you wanna look for that, you're going to be able to see through and see things. But the idea is to try to have it look as natural as possible and be hidden.
And then you said with permitting tonight, that you would be starting in the spring and completed by fall, which seemed to be a much more ambitious target than I heard last time I was there.
Yeah, we're a little bit behind schedule, obviously with where weather stands and we, we need to obviously get through all of our clearances to be ready to go and we're currently in our budgeting stage. But we, we would like to be, we'd like to be done at that point. I will say that as it relates to the question about landscaping and starting that transplant, we have to be in a special window for the trees to be not only available, but also to survive. We don't wanna shock them too badly. So, and we also have frost laws that are currently on, so that doesn't allow us to move freely any of the equipment and things that we may need in and around that road. So I hope for an early spring, but the second that we feel necessary, we're staged to begin that process immediately. So I'd like to say that sometime in, you know, April, May, that we're looking at getting the majority of that work done that's away from the construction zone proper.
Thank you. Any other comments? Jane?
Jane Solomon, eighty-one seventy-five Hendry. Is there plans for a tram to go between the fence on Huntington and the road that you're using?
This project doesn't have anything to do with the tram. So the idea of the service road is literally a service road. There has been discussion throughout the years of discussing of the potential for a tram, but that's not anything that we're asking the planning commission to consider this evening or put in the plan.
Is that something in the future? Because with all the plantings, does a tram take from the area that we'll have for the plantings?
It is on the plan.
Is it, Hank, are we talking about a tram tonight?
We're not. And the tram, if it did come back into, if they decided they wanted to do it, it would have to come before the planning commission. There would be another public hearing and you would be notified as that, same as everybody was notified of this. And that would require a public hearing. So everybody that got noticed for this would get noticed for that.
Thank you. Sir?
Jim Greenwood, eight-two-five-nine Hendry. As we seem to be focused on the density of the planting along Huntington, is that, that effect on the screen that we're trying to, you know, put into place? Would it make sense to move the service drive further away from the fence line so we have a deeper barrier between Hendry and, or the Huntington and the fence line?
Thank you for that comment. Anyone else?
Mark DeBelle, eighty-sixty-two Huntington Road. Hello. My front window faces a wooded area that bumps up to the camels exhibit. And I moved in just before, I believe, that black tarp was put up and then the landscaping came in. And I, I agree, I think we're talking about the same landscaping. That's gonna take about fifteen years, twenty years to the full end, I think, from the picture that was passed around, what they're proposing. And you brought up another thing. Future programs would look the same as that going along the whole stretch, maybe buildings or other exhibits. I'm just wondering if there's plans to extend more landscaping the whole route of fence line. Because currently, it looks like I'm looking at a black trash bag hanging from the fence. And yesterday, when the wind was picking up, it was blown up in the air. It wasn't really pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you wanting to answer that question?
I, I just make...
I know, it's not part of, let's clarify that, it's not part of tonight's, it does go to good faith and the like.
Right, that, we've made a, a good effort to start the landscape, but there's much more left to do. And we purchased, pre-purchased quite a few cedars and arbor buddies that will be planted this season. And we can definitely take a look at, at the area, you know, around your home and the area that this lady brought up here.
Because that's what I look at.
Yep.
I mean, that's, I look right past the bushes and black tarp.
Sure, okay. Thanks, thanks for the feedback.
Is that camels or...?
That's the camels exhibit.
I caught your address, so...
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sir?
Thanks. Jeb Belchinsky, I'm at eight-three-one-two Huntington. So neighbors have expressed the issues along that fence line, obviously from the past. So I'm asking everybody here as well, have we had issues in the past that have been taken care of? Or have we had issues in the past that haven't been taken care of or have? Which way has it gone when a neighbor has had issues with that viewing issue along Huntington?
I think you're asking about whether or not we have a good trusting relationship with the zoo.
Sure.
And this is just my opinion. Our relationship with the zoo, given the fact that we have a new ordinance, is certainly evolving. It must prove itself. We think, I think at least personally, that it is proving itself. But I think implicit in some of these comments is that the burden will continue to be on the zoo to make sure that it is a good neighbor, just like the burden's gonna be on us to make sure we're good neighbors. And I believe that there are issues that were unfortunate in terms of the two tree removal that was not communicated with us in an appropriate way. We've had significant discussions about that. And I think we're communicating quite well right now and I think they're respecting the communications. And I think we're respecting, you know, the fact that things don't always go perfectly at all times.
Understood. So if we fast forward now and neighbors weren't happy with what transacted from the zoo and the plants were weak or small or not wide enough, et cetera, and we get to that place now, and what rights do we have as Huntington Woods versus the zoo to plant? One neighbor brought up, well, six feet versus two and how am I gonna get my eighty percent coverage, et cetera? So my question is, what rights do we have to go ahead and plant there? Or, you know, you said what support's gonna be there, the job's gonna be done, it's gonna be over.
I'm not gonna speak to whether or not you can plant anywhere, but I will say these two things. Number one, if good faith is not demonstrated in terms of how they carry out what they say they're gonna do, that's gonna impact at least my opinion as to the level of trust that we extend to the zoo. And it's gonna presumably impact the planning commission, any future planning commission, you know, willingness to approve plans that are presented to us. But don't forget, the second thing that's important is what Carol said, our attorney, which is, they are right now, tonight, entering into a binding contract. And there are ways through courts to enforce the obligations that they're assuming tonight. So I think we've got the need to be a good neighbor and that if they're not a good neighbor, that's gonna impact how we relate to them in the future. And also, we have legal remedies.
Andy, don't we also have an annual...
Yes.
...review of the master plan?
And that's true too. There's an ongoing relationship now that's been developed and incorporated into the ordinance so that we continue to cultivate the relationship with the zoo and they tell us what their master plan is. And again, it's a relationship that's in process, but so far, things seem to be going well. Where everyone's respecting everyone's interests.
Can we get clarification on future plantings in that area or is it untouchable by Huntington Woods?
That's not before us, is it?
Yeah, I can't, but anyway, any other comments?
I just have a procedural question. It has nothing to do with the subject.
Yeah.
As residents, citizens, taxpayers, are we entitled to get an audio tape of this?
Oh yeah, it's on YouTube.
It's on cable.
Is it working?
Yeah, and I may, yeah, oh yeah, and, and I maybe, well, I have an idea of it. I'll talk with you offline about that. Ma'am?
Hi, Linda Greenwood, eight-two-five-nine Hendry. Seems to me that there's been a lot of questions about twenty-three trees, twenty-eight trees, whether it's gonna cover, whether it's not gonna cover. Isn't it reasonable before you approve a site plan that you actually have that, those questions answered and it's re-presented so that it can be looked at again?
Thank you. That's not what we typically do. We're going by the contract that's given to us and we're basing it on that.
Aaron Resh, two-five-four-four-seven Wareham. Three questions quickly. The first one is, could you talk about the traffic patterns? Basically, visitors entering into the exhibit, where they're gonna walk? The second question, is that the visitor area, will there be speakers, noise, music at like other exhibits? I do not remember my third question.
But those were, those were the, the... Those are the best two.
Yeah, I hope so.
So the traffic, the main traffic pattern is exactly the same as it currently is. That road is gonna continue along and we're just filling in what was sort of a green space with the exhibit. The only difference is the viewing areas that have the glass. And that essentially creates a dead end. You go up and you look into the glass, you turn around and come back. So pathway-wise is, is essentially the same as what's there now. And currently, we don't plan for any speakers associated with ambient music alongside the exhibit.
Okay, I remember my, my other question. Are, are there plans to cut down any more trees?
No, the tree removal is completed. I would say that within the area of the site, we certainly want to respect and try to keep all of the existing mature trees that we have to keep construction from, from damaging those, so we have a plan in place. We certainly strive to keep as many possible trees as we can and keep them incorporated in our exhibit because they're important to our wildlife and our mission. So the idea of taking those trees down isn't always easy for us either. So we're taking very good care and caution, but it is possible that we lose one or two over stress of the exhibit, but we, we plan to not.
Thank you. Anything further?
Hi, my name is Lauren Leacy, eight-seven-seven-five Lincoln Drive, and I have a question and a comment. My first question is, will there be any construction traffic in Huntington Woods at all?
No, we are anticipating not using any of the gates that we have out onto Huntington Boulevard for any construction traffic whatsoever.
So everything will come in through Woodard or...
They'll come in off of the service drive.
Okay.
Except for the possible tree plantings?
Yeah, a good point. We will, yes, we will have machines for that.
Okay.
Dump trucks for that. So during that landscaping plan, on the outside of the fence, then yes. And I would say that's probably a two to three week process.
And I guess my other comment is more for the planning commission. I think the penguinarium looks so horrible from the, our side, which is actually Royal Oak. And I, I don't know if that was a Royal Oak Planning Commission thing, but I, I don't know if that was you guys. But I would hope that we, we are like so opposite from how that looks from the Royal Oak side because you can hear the air conditioning unit and there's just that white building there. So I hope you guys will be diligent in making sure that it's not anywhere near like what the penguinarium looks like from the other side.
Thank you, that was Royal Oak.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
It's Royal Oak under the bus.
Yeah, but Royal Oak doesn't require any site plan approval from the zoo.
So any other comments? Okay, public participation's closed. Thank you ever much for your civility and the constructive nature of all the questions and your willingness to listen, and thank you for answering them so forthrightly. Okay, now the next part of our... Uh, okay, now the next part of our, uh, uh, meeting is to make any comments that we would like to make in addition to those that have already been made, uh, before we ask for a motion and a vote. Uh, I'll start with, uh, Kim.
And I'm, I guess my biggest question is how do we? We, we have the site plans that we received, but we had a lot of questions on those that, you've received a lot of answers on that. I don't know if you have that in a memo form or, uh, I'm not sure what the best way is to say the plans as presented.
Yeah.
Plus, what, what else we know?
I, there is a, this is being videotaped and there have been several representations made. Uh, I guess my question is, is it possible for the city to pay for a transcript of tonight's hearing? So there is a real good record as to what we would be incorporating into our motion?
I think, uh, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I think the motion's gotta be made based on not a transcript that we don't have yet. But you could incorporate the trees, you could incorporate, you know, as represented heights, you could incorporate any of the concerns that the residents has. You can address the, the masonry and you can incorporate that into a motion. While it may mean an extensive crafting of the motion, that would suffice and that in itself would be defensible to say that would be the motion.
So, to Kim's point, if we can't do it by incorporation by reference, which would have been convenient, but I understand why we can't. Can you, off the top of your head, uh, list, uh, the subjects that have been covered tonight? Uh, so that we can incorporate them in a motion?
I think that what you want to address is the landscaping, specific to tree height and the representation of the trees. The representation.
I'll go slow, let's go slowly. Uh, okay, go on.
The representation of the zoo to be willing to work with the city to fill in the voids if there are any.
Wall texture.
The wall texture and materials referenced. The shrubbery plan and planting plan.
Shrubbery and planting plan?
It's in the plan itself.
Yeah, see.
Yeah, no, but I'm talking anything that's beyond the plan.
Right.
Anything that's beyond the plan that we have before us.
I think those are the points that are beyond the plans. So your motion would be approving the plans as submitted.
Plus, so I don't know what the plus is.
Yes. Plus the, you know, um, the trees to be planted at the height represented.
Yeah.
The number of the trees to be twenty to thirty feet in height. Um, that they are willing to work with the city.
Mm-hmm.
If there are some voids in the trees.
Okay.
But I caution you that, you know, the ordinance requirement is eighty percent. So you wanna work within the requirements of the ordinance to make sure the ordinance is being.
Okay.
Um, and then subject to, that it be the materials shown and represented.
Are those in the plans that we've seen? The, uh, I can't remember what that's called.
Do you know, what is the name of that specifically? That material specifically?
It's called castle block.
Okay.
Is that in your, is that in what's been presented to us, the castle block?
Yeah, it was, it was supplementary material that was submitted today.
Okay, so we don't have to refer to that.
I'd refer to the castle block with it being.
But we don't have to refer to that if it's been what we got today, right?
The only representation though is that they're going to install it so it's.
Right.
And also the coloring.
I'm sorry, what?
They're gonna install it so it's.
Staggered.
Staggered.
Staggered castle block.
And also that they're going to use alternate coloring to tone it down to earth tones. So it wouldn't be all gray. Right?
That's correct.
Anything else that you guys remember that was outside the scope of what we were presented with?
I don't, I don't believe so, but I, you know, again, we addressed screening, we addressed that. Those are all part of our code.
That's, okay.
So that's not.
Right, anything that's beyond the, I'm just looking for things that are not covered somewhere.
I think those are the specifics that aren't shown on the plans.
Okay.
I think you should include the fact that the tigers shouldn't be able to get out.
No, revise.
Okay.
So, so other than that of, of how might we go about positioning this?
I think what we're. I think we're gonna do is we're gonna make.
I didn't have any other questions.
Okay, then we'll, I think we'll take care of that, Deanne, cause I think I know what to do.
Okay.
Aaron?
I guess the area that concerns me is, um, and it goes back to the drawings. Um, there's a couple of sections of sixteen foot CMU wall that are staggered castle block. But I am, I appreciate the desire to screen, but these are living, you know, trees and bushes and shrubs are living things and they vary over time and there's no perfect screening. And we are going to end up with large expanses of, um, surface with no architectural interest facing, um, the Huntington Road residence. Um, it seems in the past, some of the buildings were done in a three sixty facade, like if you talk about the rhinos and you talk about some of the other structures. In this case, there's, um, um, shot creek like rock like appearance to the tigers in the back wall is just cinder block. Albeit a very nice cinder block. Um, I don't know what to do with that right now, but I'm just concerned that they're, that it lacks architectural interest and it's just gonna be long surfaces of flat wall.
Thank you.
Nothing further to add.
Anything?
Nope, I'm fine.
Um, one of the things that I would like to see the zoo commit to is, and, and I think you do, but in, as this landscaping is put in place, we all know that some trees and some bushes survive and some do not. What is the contingency plan that the zoo has to go through on a periodic basis? Remove dead plantings and replace them with live?
We've, we've actually been doing that all along. Uh, it sounds like we need to do more. Uh, it's a tough time of the year for any landscape, if you look around your own yards and areas. But, uh, I'll give you my word that we'll go through and pull out the dead stuff and replant.
And, and I do understand that, that there are times of year that are better for planting than others.
Right.
But it's, you know, you put these new plants in the ground, they require to, they have requirements to be watered, they have requirements to be maintained. And does your landscaping staff, are they committed to that perimeter? And the, the plantings that you put along Huntington Road, that they be maintained, watered, taken care of so that they do thrive?
I, yes, they are committed. I oversee the area directly, uh, myself. And we, I take the team through there regularly and take a look at things and, and try to keep it up. Now, over the past five months, it's been tough to keep up any landscaping, so.
I understand in the winter, but I have a feeling that some of those plantings that, that are, that are dying along there have probably been dead for a little while. And, and it's, it is not necessarily that they just died this winter, that perhaps they had a lingering death over the summer.
Could be. Let us take a look at it.
Yeah.
We appreciate your patience and, uh, let us take a look at it, Jill.
I, I do think that that should be part of the motion because that, that is outside the purview of the plans themselves, that continued maintenance.
Well, can I add a minute? Um, the landscaping plan, if appro, if approved as part of the motion, becomes a condition as well. So if the landscaping is to die, that's a violation of the approved site plan.
I, I understand, but the reality of.
And I agree, they should be maintaining it.
And, and once a year going through and comparing the site plan to what is there is not something that's going to happen. That's not actually realistic. It's more just the commitment of the zoo to go through and maintain that landscaping. And when things, you know, dry up and die, because they will. Because we all know that when we've done landscaping in our own homes, some things survive, some things don't. And over time you end up replacing things. I just want that commitment to be built in, that the zoo is going to continue to maintain that section of Huntington Road.
Okay.
Nothing for me.
Sheldon?
Yeah, um, I, I'm, I'm happy the plan is presented. To address Jill's point, I don't know that we can qualify the approval or denial of a plan based upon continuing maintenance. A plan is approved as a snapshot. It's gotta be installed the way to comply with the plan that's been presented. I don't think we have the authority or the enforcement ability to make sure that is gonna be looking that way ten years from now. I just don't think we can do that. And, and I accept their commitment that they're in their, in ordinary program, they're gonna do that. I don't think it belongs, I don't think it has any place in a, in a motion that we might or might not present.
I tend to agree with you. The whole idea is a contract.
And, and that's fine. My intention was just that, uh, we have a good faith relationship with the zoo. That, that they are going to do what they committed to do in the installation of their landscape plan. But that they will, you know, in, in a, in the spirit of upkeeping the beauty of the exhibit, that they will go through and, and check it. And, and I appreciate that they have said that, yes, they will include that in their general landscaping plan and general maintenance. That's all.
Thank you.
I have some, uh, concerns. My first concern is we as a body are the only thing that stands between the zoo and our residents and their property values. Um, in researching what other communities do in a situation like this, the common theme emerged. It said, what can be done? They asked, what can be done to ensure the surrounding residential properties will not be adversely affected by any changes in the future or future developments? In each situation, efforts are made to protect property values by maintaining views, maintaining or reducing noise le, levels, among other things. And this is largely accomplished by most of these places, in the, industrial and zoos such as Toledo, uh, by creating landscape buffers. Uh, it's a very effective method for doing it. As far as our relationship with the zoo, um, everything that has been presented sounds wonderful, but the reality is there's a little bit of a tenuous relationship with the residents and the zoo. Going back to the eighty percent, um, opacity with the tarp, that is still not eighty percent. Um, so that gives me pause, thinking, looking forward to this particular, um, exhibit. Um, I'm concerned because at the last meeting, we asked specifically if any more trees would be taken down and we were told no. Only to find out a couple of days later that ten to fifteen other trees were taken down. To find out that those trees were supposedly hazardous trees. To find out after I got the plans that, no, actually they were taken out for the holding center. So I don't really know if I can trust everything that's being said. So my suggestion, my personal preference, if I had one, would be that we re-examine the actual landscape plan. Re-examine whether or not we could push back that, um, that road five feet to give a bigger buffer. Because I think ultimately what it comes down to is if we can't see it, it's not going to be a problem. Whatever we can do to create that buffer zone, which is done at the, at the Toledo Zoo, it's actually required. The city requires twenty-five foot buffer zone. I know that's not in our ordinance now, um, but I'm just saying that this is something that I would like to be considered. So right now I'm not entirely comfortable.
Thank you. Uh, I believe that a significant effort has been made to accommodate competing interests. And I believe that a lot of thought and time, uh, has gone into, uh, how to make sure that while there may be some change, uh, the interests of the folks, particularly who reside along Huntington Woods, I mean Huntington Drive, eh, or road, uh, are respected and that those interests are not diminished. Uh, we do not live in a static world. Uh, we live in a world where there is change and we are neighbors with, uh, each other and the zoo. And the question that I'm asking myself tonight is, do I believe in my heart that the zoo is making a good faith, vigorous attempt to ensure the integrity of our neighborhood? We are never gonna have a guarantee about perfection. We are never gonna have a guarantee that, uh, there will not be some possible theoretical adverse impact. The fact of the matter is, is we are establishing a long-term relationship that has to be respected and carried out in good faith. Uh, by voting to approve your plan, it is, in my mind, a, uh, uh, a willingness on this body's part, if this is the way the vote goes, to trust, uh, and make sure that in fact you are true to your word. If you are not true to your word and have no reason to believe that, you won't be, notwithstanding some of the comments. Uh, it will impact our future conversations. But there has been so much work, uh, that has been put into satisfying this commission that I think to push it off for another month for more refinements, um, is kicking the can down the road, uh, to an end that I'm not even sure will be a productive one. So I am prepared to vote to support your plan, uh, subject to the, um, conditions that have been itemized. Uh, recognizing that this is a leap of faith. I don't think it's a long one, but it is one. And, um, that's where I am. Uh, does anyone wanna make a motion?
Yeah, you're the only one with the notes to do it.
Okay. Or do you, you want to list that, you want the list of the, the few things that we have?
I, I have.
I have.
You have? You wanna make it?
I can give it a try.
Okay.
I move that we approve, um, the plans as presented. And in addition, um, we make note of the use of staggered castle rock in alternating earth tones, uh, for the masonry. Um, tiger mesh, two by two, was a sixteen gauge, we were thinking. Um, and that the tree plantings, uh, on the various levels that were mentioned in the plans, um, hold true to twenty-five foot, um, height.
Minimum.
Minimum. Um, and we recognize that the other two levels of, of plantings, the shrubbery and the lower, uh, shrubbery will be lower. But we'll fill in to, um, our requirement of eighty percent, um, according to our zoning. Did I get it all?
Uh, I had, final, uh, which may be redundant with yours, uh, landscaping, representations as to landscaping specific to, uh, types of trees.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, and that the represent, representation of landscaping is specific to the types of trees you've called out in the plans. Type and height?
Shrubbery.
Type and height.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, you might want to include in there, uh, the type and height.
She got height.
I did.
Okay, you did get height, okay. And the only thing that I would ask is before you vote, if the recorder needs any clarification or needs time to refine that motion so that she has exactly what you said.
You okay?
Yep.
Okay.
And I think we wanna note the plan date. So we're getting the revised plans?
That is correct.
So it would be fe, the February eighteenth, two thousand eighteen revised plans?
Incorporated, okay.
Along with changes that have occurred since the receipt.
And been announced tonight.
So I, I would just say any and all materials that have been presented to the city as of today. Plus what, uh, Martha just said in terms of the, uh, new representations.
Whatever that was, I second that.
Yeah, okay. Uh, we do have a motion. I think motion is clear. Uh, but just in a nutshell, the motion is, uh, that approval is based on, uh, strict adherence, adherence to all the plans that have been submitted today. Plus the items listed by Martha, um, uh, which were representations, uh, made tonight. That's the motion. Uh, any discussion as to the motion at this point, other than what's already been said?
One question of clarification on the tree height. I heard you say twenty-five foot minimum. That's not what I heard.
It's twenty to twenty.
Earlier.
Twenty.
Said twenty-five feet and.
I, I had written down a twenty, twenty to twenty-five foot on those, but I.
I heard that too.
If it's minimum twenty, then it should read minimum twenty, not.
I'll change my proposal to minimum twenty to twenty-five.
Okay. Okay.
Seconds, okay.
Thank you. Any, any other discussion about the motion that's now before us? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Two. So it's seven to two. Um, so it passes. So thank you very much. Um, and we will appreciate our ongoing dialogue in relationship with you. And I'm sure you're gonna work very closely with Hank to make sure that you do what, uh, the motion stipulates. Thank you.
Would you like the giant tubes of?
Okay, uh.
Mr. Chairman?
Guys, we have, hey, folks, folks, we have more on the agenda, so if you could, uh, yeah, let's have a three-minute recess, guys. I wanna keep, I like me. What about the wall?
Folks, we're going to get ready for the rest of the meeting, so if anybody that wants to stay for the rest of the meeting could be here, the chair is prepared to call the meeting back to order.
I wonder if we could make a motion to homeowners before.
What? Oh.
Quicker one. I mean, I guess you never know.
We got new letters too, which I lost.
These.
No, no, no. Are they tonight?
This isn't tonight. This is about tonight.
Yeah, I haven't seen that. Oh, yeah, those two. Okay, we'll call it back to order. The next item on the agenda is.
Were that cleared out?
Boardman. So you're up.
My name is Michael Morgan. I live at one zero four nine five Boardman Avenue. You know, I have plans before the commission for, in addition to our house. It is master suite, so a new master bedroom with a bathroom. So it's a four-bedroom house. It's going to continue to be a four-bedroom house. But we're building out so we can have proportionally sized rooms along with the larger master suite. And it, it addresses a bathroom. We have, we have a bathroom in the back. What is the current master that is, wasn't very thoughtfully designed? The current one, you actually have to step around the toilet to get into the shower. So it's kind of a problem. So we wanted to address that issue. And then a couple of minor things, expanding out of my room. There are certain things in the plan that we are not doing, once we got the inspection contract, because we realized we can't afford to do things like on the back of the house, the sunroom. So we're not doing that this time around, although if it gets approved, there's, you know, a chance we might do it in the future.
Anything else?
And as far as all the finishes on the outside, we're just continuing with existing. So we have vinyl windows, vinyl siding. We're ready to get the same color, same type of windows. But they all look nice now, so I don't think there'd be much of a concern there. And that's it, I think, as far as the plan itself. My neighbor, I know he has some concerns, so we can talk to him about this. But that's, that's our thinking.
Okay, thank you. Hank?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you're aware, this is reviewed under the ordinance as currently existing. A couple of things that I wanted to point out is that their height is under the height limits that we require. Their front yard setback, although a survey was not provided, all my dimensions indicate that a variance for a front yard setback will be required. The reason for that is, is that if it was going straight over the existing footprint, then they would be grandfathered in, but they're extending further forward with the second floor than they have with the original footprint. And the original footprint wasn't provided with the dimension, but if you add it all up, it appears that there's going to need a variance, and that will need to be confirmed to the exact amount. So what that is, I can't give you exactly this evening. The side yard cannot be posed for any change, but the minimum side yard is five feet. Total of fourteen is required in that zone district, which is R one D. The rear yard, there's no change, and it currently exists. And the lot coverage is proposed at twenty-six point four nine percent. And with the additional cantilever, which is not necessarily really a cantilever because it's been supported by brackets, but it does come further forward into the setback, would be twenty-six point four nine percent. The owner's applied figures include thirty point sixty-six before and after for lot coverage, which are different than the figures that we have. And again, those would have to be verified with a survey. And this thirty point sixty-six, the stance right now would be a violation of our lot coverage, which maxes out at thirty percent in the R one D zone district. So we have to figure that out before we can decide exactly how many variances they need. The house size, using the new calculations for that, would be allowed at twenty-three hundred and twenty-one percent. And by the owner's calculation, they're twenty-six hundred and seventy-seven percent, which would need a variance or a modification. The way that the house is designed has a garage which comes out towards the front of the house. It's not typical of what houses are in Huntington Woods, but it exists. So what he'd like to do is he'd like to use that space over the existing foundation to add square footage to the second floor of his house in the form of a master suite. I've included also the base allocations. They allow bonus size for the lot coverage. And how I arrived at the calculations, I would point out that he has architectural details. The mutton bars, trim boards for windows, they weren't detailed, but we did assume that they have vinyl plaid windows and James Hardy siding, which is not the case. However, they do meet with three or more of the architectural details, so they're still eligible for the two hundred and fifty square feet. Should it be the pleasure of the planning commission to grant that. The roof height itself qualifies for the hundred and fifty square feet. They do not qualify for the stepped-in second floor bonus, and this plan does not meet the eligible fenestration bonus. The garage is not detached. It exists and it's attached. The ordinance provides for extra square footage for a detached garage. So this would not qualify for that, but the garage already exists, which I do want to point out. Based on the collective bonus application, the maximum allowed here would be twenty-three hundred and twenty-one square feet, proposed as twenty-six hundred and thirty-seven, seventy-seven square feet. So either a variance, and we do have to go for two, possibly three variances with this, would have to happen. And just to be clear, under the old ordinance, the maximum allowed for this lot size here would be twenty-five hundred and forty-two, if it maxed out. Overall review, the plan presents a proposal with a large front addition. The design creates a substantial change to the front massing, which is evident on the plan. I've included in the existing current photo front from, you can see in the way the code reads right now, it's too large for the existing site. My recommendation is before you. And again, the plans were reviewed under the new ordinances. The lots on either side of the gentleman in question are both the same size. The house to the east is seventeen hundred and forty-five square feet. The house to the west is fourteen hundred and ninety-eight square feet. One is a colonial, one is a bungalow. Mr. Morgan's house is a colonial, and you know what his square footage is. Both the houses, the house to the east is two floors, Mr. Morgan's house is two floors. And the house that's a bungalow is considered a one point five, uh, one point five story house. The exterior materials now clarified are vinyl siding and vinyl windows. The exterior siding on the house to the east is brick and siding. This house is brick and siding, and the house to the west is brick. Two of the houses have attached garage, and one has a detached garage. If you have any other questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them, as I'm sure Mr. Morgan is.
Thank you. Let's do public participation on this site plan application, if there is any.
I'm Luke Larson, one oh four eight seven Boardman. I live to the east. I sent some pictures to Hank. I don't know if he included them. But our view out of our west windows will basically be eliminated. To be able to see the sky, we will only see brick or siding from either the first floor or the second floor. And so that's our primary objection to the plan.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, public participation's closed. I'll start with Allison.
Well.
Okay, then I'll start with Kim. I'll start with myself. Uh, Ken, Hank?
Yes.
I mean, have we ever experienced a situation where we've been asked for variances of this type? The number of them and the, frankly, the significance of them in terms of house size and, you know, front yard setback, and just the fact that they're unknown at this point?
It's, it's not typical that the planning commission's been asked to do that. Any documentation would have to be supplied. I couldn't even advertise this for his own board of appeals based on the information that I have. Assuming that Mr. Morgan's willing to apply that information, he could proceed into, he could proceed to his own board of appeals, subject to approval of the planning commission.
So, Mr. Morgan?
If the planning commission is not, is not forthcoming with a motion to approve based on the fact that there's some refinement of the plan that's necessary, then that may, may indicate a necessity to table, and so that Mr. Morgan can supply the additional information.
Okay, let me ask a couple of questions, Mr. Morgan, if you'd say okay.
Yeah.
To what extent did you work with Hank to understand the lay of the land?
I think I sent Hank preliminary plans six or eight weeks ago, something like that. And Hank said he didn't foresee any issues except for windows. And we looked at that. We have a window on every wall in every room, so we didn't really think to address that. And then I supplied the plans on January twenty eighth, something around there. And then had a couple of back and forth with Hank. But most of this came out Friday, and I'm, I'm going to assume pretty busy with their zoo stuff.
I'm sorry?
Pretty busy with the zoo stuff.
Yeah. Well, Hank, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, sure. Just for clarification, the way that our department is set up, the last week of the month, we work on stuff for the historic district, which takes place in the first week of the month. The week of the month, the first week of the month, we work on stuff that takes place for the zoning board of appeals, which the meeting is held the second Monday of the month. The third meeting of the month is when I try to get my reviews done pending anything else. But our actual review for the planning commission is the week prior to the Friday that you receive your agenda. So during that time, the third week, which is the only open week, is used for code enforcement and various other activities. It's a responsibility of the planning department. But this is not atypical of our schedule. We work on the plans the week prior to the meeting.
We received several comments from neighbors objecting to these plans. You are requesting several variances. I'm gonna just say, there's no way I can vote for this tonight. And I'm gonna recommend, once the comments are done, that there is a motion to table. So you have another month to work on this, so you're not trying to spit a big balloon into a small box, which is really the way it comes across to me. We're not ready to go. And I couldn't vote for something when I had no clue. Well, first of all, they're in contravention of the ordinances. You're seeking variances as to fundamental things. And personally, I just don't feel ready to vote on this, so I would recommend a table.
So can I make a comment, though?
Sure.
In terms of these things, which I require variances for, I, I read government regulations for a living. I searched extensively to try to find these regulations before and even after Hank told me I still can't find them. That's my profession. And I'm not saying that affects anything you're saying. I'm just making a side comment that as a city, we gotta fix that.
I, I think they are fixed, and that's why I'm surprised you hear you, because they're the new, they're the new ordinances, not to be argumentative.
Even, even the old ordinance, Mr. Chairman, is available online. There's a unique.
No, you can read the ordinance, but the ordinance makes references to things, right? So the, the max house size, things like that. It makes references to things that you cannot find.
It's actually very specific and scheduled, the schedule regulations.
We, we deal with these for, very, in very great detail. Okay. Yeah, I think that, what I would suggest is that you work with Hank, if, in fact, there is a motion to table and it's passed.
And, and we are going to need a survey, otherwise I can't.
Yeah, I heard, I talked to.
So that was my thoughts. Anyone else got any thoughts other than what I said? Sheldon?
I, I would generally concur. I mean, if, if, if the resident wants to go forward with a plan that requires variances, I, I don't think it's our purview to judge the suitability of the variances. I think it's our, not that we can totally ignore them, but, but I think it's mainly a design issue in terms of fenestration and materials and that sort of stuff. If there are dimensional variances and the, and the applicant wants to go forward with those and, and take a shot at the zoning board, I think he's entitled to do it. But in terms of this particular plan, I don't even know, I, if, there's too many unknowns in terms of sizes and dimensions and where things go and, and, and that sort of stuff that would be probably cured by a, I think it was a survey you needed, Hank?
That's, that's where I was concerned, yes.
I, I mean.
But we also know that there is a, it, it, it's above our maximum house size limit.
Yeah, well, that's.
I know, but, okay, there are variances, and then there are variances, I guess.
Yeah, okay. But all I'm saying is, I, I agree with you. If it was just a matter of variances, I, I might, I might feel differently. But based upon what we have before us today, I, I, I mean, it's up to the applicant. He can withdraw the application, or, or I'm certainly in favor of tabling, so he doesn't have to pay another fee.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just one on, from a process standpoint, Hank, I think. So as we enter this brave new world of bonuses, this house, the maximum bonus and lot size adjustment, if it got everything it could be, would equal a house of twenty-three seventy-one.
That's correct.
So I, I think if, on the page one, it would help us, because there is going to be some discretion that we're going to end up applying as we go through whether or not something deserves a bonus or not. And so understanding on page one what the, what the maximum house size, if all bonuses were granted, would be, I think would help people with the mental math, as opposed to, as opposed to just the, your valued interpretation of the bonuses. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fine.
And then?
I can do that. And in fact, I think there was another house that was pulled off, and I did that just to see if it would be more filling. Basically, what happened is that now that we're looking at this type of ordinance, we don't have the exact table that we had before, where we could shoot down the columns. So I'm kind of experimenting a little. So what I wanted to do is I wanted to show you the actual ordinance table, where I pulled those from, so that you would know that.
And I appreciate that. That's very helpful.
No, and, and, but, but to your point, we're going to get to a place where we have a better mousetrap for disseminating that information. The information's there, but we just need to find a better format for it, because we've been dealing with the same format for twenty-some years. So, it's a very good point.
Yep. And Mr. Morgan, I appreciate your desire to invest in the neighborhood and in your house. I would say I would pay a lot of attention to the overall square footage, as a word of the wise. Three hundred over the max allowable is going to be a really tall order, especially when it's coming on top of the garage. You know, I, I don't think that's just going to walk up from us to the zoning board of appeals, but I can't speak for everybody else.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Guys, anyone want to motion or comments?
Move the table.
What if there's a motion on the table?
Your one. Did you want to say something?
Well, only I just wanted to echo Aaron's comments about, we are taking maximum house size very seriously. And you are asking for something that is significantly over the maximum house size. And it's all coming out, it's on the front, going up. Neighbors have concerns. You're going to want to, to sit down and spend a lot of time with Hank, trying to figure out how to make what you need or want work within the confines that you have. So just put some serious thought into that.
I, I would also point out to, you know, for Mr. Morgan's defense, is that when we do get a survey, we may find out that some of these numbers change.
You might.
And as a result, you know, I mean, it could be that he actually has a survey, and his house may be set back far enough that he doesn't need that front yard variance. I don't know that, but if that's the case, that takes one off the table. Also, if his lot is a little bit larger, it reduces the amount that he may need for a variance for maximum house size.
Agreed.
But once we have the survey, we'll be able to discern that, and I'm certainly willing to work with Mr. Morgan as.
Thank you. And thank you for being patient. We understand. Well, this is new.
I, I would only say that we, we would, we would prefer you have all the info. I, I would only say that we, we would, we would prefer you have all the information with all the correct numbers on it before you sit down and, and we pick it apart in any way. So, I, it would be helpful to both you and to us if all that information was put together.
I assure the commission that I tried very hard to try to do that.
I, I believe you did. I believe you did. I just, I just think that it's, you know, for your own.
Am I able to get an enumerated list of the concerns? Because what I think I'd hate to do is spend a lot of time addressing seven of eight things, 'cause I'm not aware of the eighth thing.
I, I don't.
The variances are fairly easy, but concerns for neighbor, if there's things I can do about it, I would like to address it.
Yeah, I, I will tell you that I wouldn't, at this point, I would not want to. I mean, some people here have expressed certain concerns about very certain things, and, and I don't discount those matters. But I would not wanna give any kind of a checklist at this point till we have a final set of plans.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I, understanding what Mr. Morgan is asking, what I can do that might help him out is that once we get through this, I can give him a list, and Mr. Morgan, as I've communicated on emails in various ways in the past, and I'd be happy to supply him with a list of what the concerns are from the finite standpoint. Um, and when he addresses those, like, some of this, this is the maximum house size, may alleviate the concerns of some of the residents by maybe pulling the front back a little bit, then all of a sudden, he doesn't need the front variance, and the house doesn't have the same mass. So, with that, I believe there's an opportunity to work with Mr. Morgan to update this plan.
Thank you.
You, you want to say something?
Oh, I just wanted to echo what Jill said about, um, paying close attention to size relationships with your neighbors. You, this is gonna double the size of your house in relationship to theirs. The proportion's gonna be astonishing. And I can totally understand how your neighbors feel, and if there's any way that you can figure out to, um, play down the amount of size in the front, that would be appreciated design-wise. Uh, and I also suggest that you pay close attention to egress and windows, and hopefully matching your fenestration from one window to the next. And you said you're not sure if you're gonna do that back sunroom now?
No, we do not intend to do that now.
Okay, because I was gonna suggest you put a window there too.
Well, that was all windows.
Huh?
That was a wall of them, the back.
Across the back.
Well, I'm looking at the right side elevation.
Only across the back.
So, um, where there's nothing on the first floor.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Well, that's 'cause it, it, that's up against Bruce's house. I would only see, it's like, there's a road, basically.
But we, we look for openings in masses of vinyl siding and other kinds of wall. We've got an entire wall of nothing here, shown on here. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe you just didn't include the windows that were there. But what I'm looking at on your right side of elevation is an entire first floor of, of no, no openings, and that's, that's.
Are you talking about the west side or the east side of the house?
I'm just looking at what I have here. It doesn't say west.
The right side.
It's the right side.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, at this point, we're not, we're not.
Yeah, yeah, look, work with Hank, uh.
Yeah, we'll talk. We've been going back.
Yeah.
Yeah, but really closely, because there are certain things that we see a month and month in, month in and month out that we care about that haven't quite been respected here. Um, anyone wanna make, well, there's a motion to table. Is there a second motion? I mean, second?
Second.
Second, any discussion as to the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, it's tabled. Uh, thank you for your, uh.
For the next regular meeting.
At the next, yeah.
Not regular.
Would you like these plans back?
Yeah.
Um, sure.
Okay, and Hank, the, uh, the, uh, one four, uh, two six, one two six, Metapress was withdrawn.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, at this point, time, uh, having worked very closely with the people on that, it's a new house. They did not, um, they weren't ready to go.
Okay.
So, there's a couple revisions that they're gonna make. Uh, as a courtesy, we would ask that you table that one for the next meeting, so that they can, uh, bring in the rest of the information.
Anyone wanna make a motion for that?
Move the table for the next regular meeting.
Set it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes. And public participation, no one's here, public open and shut. Um, any, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Second.
Yeah, great. Thanks.
Thank you.